All right, good evening. And welcome to the Special Board of Commissioners Finance Committee meeting. We will begin by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. I can see we have some, quite a few residents here, and I'm assuming you're here for public comments, so we will get right to it. Can we ask everyone to please, now it's a little tight, we've got to the podium, because we realize that if you stand back there, we can't see you when we find, when the taping is done, so, you're welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name's Gretchen Grovel. I'm the Executive Director of the Radnor Conservancy, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of topics. Radnor Conservancy is invested and committed to the success of Radnor Township's trail projects. Grant funding has been awarded for the TAF trails, and a grant application has been submitted for the Radnor Trail Extension. Time, talent, and resources have been put into these projects. Trails connect residents to the business district and train stations, they allow people a safe place to exercise and for social engagement, they raise our property values. The Conservancy is here to help and to be a partner. Please make the completion of these trails a priority. Second, I wanted to speak about the future sustainability of our parks and open space. Radnor Township parks need to be managed in a sustainable way. Township investments, like park renovations, need to have a maintenance plan, like caring for those newly planted trees, landscaping, or wooded areas. We want these parks to be around for future generations. Radnor Township parks, 400 acres, are one of our greatest natural assets. The trees and wooded areas need management. All of the ash trees will fall victim to Emerald Ash ore if they haven't already been treated so far. Is there a plan and money for their removal? The wooded areas of our parks are filled with invasives. There needs to be a plan. Please invest in this. And lastly, I just want you guys to consider recycling. The business district, our parks, and the library all need recycling bins. We need to provide the public with the opportunity to recycle, so, thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Do we have any other public?
Lisa.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Let me just leave that in.
Well, I was waiting on the last.
Got you. Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment this evening?
Good evening, Tim Pride, Williams Road, Ward 7. I'm calling in regards, standing up tonight in regards to kind of something that started last special meeting with respect to the approach being taken for the capital budgeting process. Having listened to what Mr. White said last week, last time, about trying to set up an objective system with prioritization, and then seeing today where we have a list of different projects being submitted for approval based upon the amounts that's going to be received by increasing the debt that's being taken out by the township, I really am just standing to speak to the need to have an objective prioritization of different fundamentals that we look at when we're trying to determine whether one project or another project should be passed forward at a given time. Things like public safety, things like infrastructure, maintaining the public assets which we already have, preserving the natural resources in our community. These are objective measures that we can use when trying to rank different projects that they come along to determine whether now is the time to invest the capital resources into a project. It provides an objective measure for the administration to use in presenting their perspective and their plans for the committee to then approve. That's really what I'm standing for here right now, and unfortunately I need to go and pick up my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Any other public comment this evening? And we will go ahead and move on. Our first item on the agenda is the motion to authorize sending the Township Solicitor to the zoning hearing board meeting regarding 489 Upper Gulf Road. Does any staff want to speak to this, or Rich do you want to speak to this?
This was something that I asked to have on this agenda. It was a request from some of my neighbors that the township considered the issues involved, the precedent that this would set, and other detrimental effects to the neighborhood. As such, the constituents requested that the Board of Commissioners formally oppose the request of variance and send, and authorize council to attend the zoning hearing board, which will be this Thursday night, to make that, to make that case. So that's, that's what this is, and thank you for allowing this to be placed on the agenda last Wednesday.
So this is a, a request to change the zoning on a house that's being gifted?
It's an existing house. It's an old house, 10,000 square foot house, two acres, single-family, R1 zoning in the area, which is one acre minimum of single-family homes, and the request would be to allow this to be used as a dormitory for multiple people, 10 people who are not related. So, similar to what we have in Garrett Hill and other locations where we have prohibitions, and we're seeking to enforce the zoning in that area, and that's, that's what the request is.
So do we need to vote? Do we need to vote to send this solicitor? Yes, correct. All right, so why don't we get a motion on the floor, because I'm going to gather that there may be some people that want to speak to this. So, may I get a motion to approve sending the Township Solicitor to the zoning hearing board meeting regarding 49 Upper Gulf Road, and that will be the zoning hearing board for next week?
This week, this Thursday.
This week, this Thursday, okay.
So moved.
Seven.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there any Commissioner comment with regards to the motion?
I don't really see the harm in this. When you look at that property and the layout, and the good utilization of the property, this isn't a fraternity. These are religious orders, novices. It doesn't seem like it could harm anybody, and it doesn't set precedent. That's incorrect, so I'm not in favor of.
What is the concern? They're going to throw keggers and throw the property value down, or what's, what's the real concern?
The concern would be to have, to fundamental change in the neighborhood, changing the use, and a house becoming, a single-family house becoming a dormitory in the, in the zoning, in the R1 zoning for single-family residences, so, well, I think we'll hear from some, some folks on this, and certainly we'll hear from Nick on this, who's representing the applicants, but the concern is the neighbors are concerned about the fundamental change of the neighborhood, their, their properties, the use, and the inconsistent use of that property with the neighborhood.
But is it just that they don't want 10 people who are not biologically related to one another, or is there a concern other than, what's it going to look like that's going to be different?
Well, there's multiple concerns, but a dormitory for 10 or 12 is different than a single-family home with a family.
How if you have 10 or 12 people in the family?
Well, I, I have a question. Is this currently owned by private?
By your.
Okay. Do you currently pay taxes on your land?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And this would be gifted to the university, or?
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with the university. It's being gifted to a religious order of priests. They are called brothers of the Order of Permits of St. Augustine, or shortened the Order of St. Augustine. This is a priest here, the head of the provincial, and a priest behind him.
I believe the issue would be, taxability would be questionable after that donation.
I think Lisa's.
Can I just, can I just ask, if you want to, if you're going to speak, would you mind coming up front so that everyone can see you?
Okay, certainly.
Well, are we, is there any other Commissioner comment before we go into public comment?
I mean, I have questions, but, I mean, should I wait and ask?
Okay, so, perhaps, why don't we?
I guess Nick, you're here.
Why don't we have, Nick, do you, do you have a presentation, Nick, or do you want to have something?
I just sort of briefly describe what is going on here. There's a lot of misconceptions.
Sure, can I finish my, a couple of questions?
Do you want to let Nick present, and then?
But you have a question.
No, I mean, no, 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 why don't you present, because you may answer my question
there, but I want to circle back to questions about taxability and subdivision and all that other stuff.
The applicant here is the Augustinian Order, as you may be aware. The home, I think as everyone knows, is a large home, it's probably over 10,000 gross square feet, the home itself, and has like 10 bedrooms. I think it's on almost 30 acres, like 2.8, 2.9 acres of land, pretty isolated, I don't know if you have the file there, but the papers show how isolated it is. There's a long driveway up to the home. Currently is owned by Jim Collin, who was speaking earlier, and he is looking to give of the property, or wishes to make a gift of the property that this is approved by the zoning hearing board, to the Augustinians. The Augustinians would house their novices, which would be, next year is six, this year was less than that, and they live together as a family. They don't all have their, a vehicle, they're, they're not students, they're not going to classes, they live there during their novice period, which is approximately one year, there's no change in who is living there during that period of time. They have two or three advisors from the Augustinians that would be living there with them. They eat together, it's one kitchen, they're living together, they're praying together, they're, they're doing everything together, they're sharing the same furniture, they're sharing the living room, dining room, they each would have their own bedroom. Basically, this is the same as a single housekeeping unit, it's the same as a family, except there are six to 10 people living there, which would be similar to a family, who'd be living in a large home of this nature. Father Michael and, and Father Horn could testify, if you wish, or at least speak to what the novices do, what their agenda is, what the Augustinians do. I think you may know, certainly they're involved in education, but they're also involved in missionary work, social work, prison work, there's a lot of different things the Augustinians do, besides involved with Villanova and the president of Villanova. This has nothing to do with Villanova, it has nothing to do with being a dormitory, it is a living accommodation for the priests and for their novices who wish to become an Augustinian, to see if they really want to become Augustinians or not. They may convert a small room to a chapel, or they could have daily services, but again, you're not bringing in teachers, you're not bringing in other people, you're only, would be limited to the Augustinians themselves. Also, I mentioned in the application, and I've mentioned to some of the attorneys, at least one of the attorneys from the neighbors, that would be willing to condition this if the Augustinians ever gave up the property, he'll revert back to his current zoning. We're not looking to change the zoning on the property permanently. This is just for one particular use by the Augustinians. If the Augustinians ever left the property, the use would discontinue, they would go back to single-family residence, which is really what we're doing here anyway, is single-family residence. But there's no precedental value that we're looking for, this is just limited to the Augustinians themselves, it would be limited to the number of novices they have there, it would be limited to no more than 10 people, which I mentioned is probably six novices and perhaps three advisors who would be living there. It's a single housekeeping unit, that's what it is. It's not establishing any new zoning, it's not establishing any precedental value for anything around the property, it is being used as a single-family residence, which is consistent with the current zone.
Well, it's not consistent because they're not the same bloodline, right?
They're not in the same.
So, that's not consistent, that's a total misrepresentation of words. No, 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 it is, Nick, no, Nick, your words aren't.
This was a single housekeeping unit, and that's what I was saying. So don't accuse me of making a misrepresentation.
Come on, come on.
Nick, you can do it all the time.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
So, Nick, so, Nick, yeah.
It does set precedent.
It does. So, this would take the, this would take this property up tax-free, is that correct?
They would have to apply for a tax exemption if they desire to apply for a tax exemption.
Okay, that's number one. Is this property subdivisible?
Yes. It would, it would be subdivitable, would be willing to condition that it was not subdivided during the Augustinians' lease of property. It is one acre zoning, so technically, I guess, if you tore down the house, which is a large, beautiful mansion, you could subdivide the property, but would be willing to condition it that it were not subdivided. Matter of fact, we told Mr. Collin, the owner, that would not be subdividing the property, because that was a concern of his also, that we could carve off an acre.
Could you put an addition on the house?
We could, again, be willing to condition it that we would not.
So if you put an addition on the house, and you allow for five more bedrooms, then you could move five more people in there, correct?
We would be willing to put a condition on any approval that we would not put an addition on the.
Okay. And then you're saying that the Augustinian is a different, a different group than Villanova University, but?
That's correct.
So can, is there a crossover at all? You said that they would pray and they go to chapel. Do they use the university and the facilities, the religious facilities in that university to pray, or to maybe not teach? They may not be teaching in their, in that domicile, but outside of that?
I'd have to defer to Father Michael.
Okay, sure.
How it works.
Nick, I'm trying to think about this. The closest thing that I can think of is in my ward, right behind St. Catherine's, which would be where, right? But I think there's a, I mean, that, that house is right behind St. Catherine's, right? And there's a parking lot there, so if there are any cars, you know, that's basically all set up there. What does the car situation look like? Are there cars? Like, what's going on with that?
There's parking, there's already garages there, there's a large parking area in the rear of the building, I believe I have a photograph of it.
I'm not sure if we're actually litigating the case here in front of the Board of Commissioners before the zoning hearing board.
Well, we need.
Well, wait, but, I mean, we just want to know. I mean, we're, we're about to oppose this, or we're leaving alone, so, I just want to know what went on with that, that's all.
I don't know if you have the packet.
We have the application.
Yeah, here, here.
For the zoning hearing.
Probably not going to be able to see them.
Nick, may I speak to that issue?
Yes, yes. Just to, here's the picture, again, you probably can't tell, I can hand these up to the Board if you want to look at them, but the one photograph here, that shows the parking area. I can hand these up to the Board if you want to.
It's Upper Gulf.
It's by tree.
It's true.
Kind of near with the Pet Sematary.
Yeah.
Okay, so?
Yeah, that's the same aerial, that's the same aerial that you have before.
Could that parking be used for university parking? Do they add it on to the university?
It has nothing to do with university, and it would be a totally different use of the institution if it were the university.
Would the, would the Augustinians be willing possibly to pay taxes on the property?
I haven't discussed that.
And then the other question that you seem to want to.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Well, I mean, I just had just general questions about the subdivision and who goes there.
I think you had a question on the use.
I guess I could speak to the, to the issue of who we are. My name is Father Michael de Gruborio, I'm the religious superior for all of the Augustinians on the East Coast. There are 150 of us, who serve in many different states, from Massachusetts, New York State, New York City, Pennsylvania, South Jersey. We operate various ministries where we are. Here in this local area, one of our ministries is Villanova University, another is our motherhood council parish in Bryn Mawr, St. Thomas of Villanova Parish in Rosemont, Malvern Preparatory School, St. Augustine Prep in South Jersey. The novice is a training ground for young men who are considering becoming members of our community to prepare themselves to minister in one or another of these different ministries that we operate. This year is a year of contemplation for them. It's an opportunity for them to spend time getting to know who we are by studying our constitutions, our laws, our spirituality, our history, and they're under the tutelage of three friars, who are professed senior friars, who live with them and instruct them. Their life is a life on a daily basis of prayer, of communal conversations, some manual work, to the degree that it's possible for them, but it's very much an enclosed life. The relationship between the order and the university is this. We founded Villanova in 1842. Villanova has grown into an independent organization. We still sponsor it. Several of us sit on the Board of Trustees of Villanova University, but it's an independent institution today. As has already been said, there's no intent that Villanova University would participate in the life of the novice in any formal way or in any systematic way.
But there, but there would be some, though.
There would be on a personal level, that some of the friars who teach at Villanova University would visit the novice, as members of a family visit from one home to another, but nothing more than that.
Well, but you could eventually house people, professors, religious professors, clergy that would teach at Villanova, you could, is that correct? Not saying you will, saying you could.
That could be possible, certainly.
That could be possible. Where are, because this would be a new housing, where are these people living now? Are they spread throughout? I know that.
Presently, our novice is located in Wisconsin, far distant from us. We have no other ministries in Wisconsin, so our desire is to bring our novices back to the East, where they will have the opportunity to associate from time to time with friars who live in this general area, to be closer to us.
Would, would you be willing to, because, to pay taxes on that property?
Haven't even been asked that question yet. I don't know everything that's involved, we'd have to take that under advisement.
Okay.
I don't know what are, what we're entitled to, nor do I know what we're obliged to, so we would have to.
No, you would, you would be tax exempt.
Yeah.
We, we know that. I'm saying, certain institutions that are tax exempt, and medicine, sometimes would offer to pay something, they'll pay taxes or do something called a pilot, which is a payment in bill of taxes, knowing that you would have to pay it, but you would want to help our community. This seems to me like a very big house that probably pays a fair amount of taxes to our, to our township. Our township is fairly hurt when it comes to our tax bases recently, and that's a, a big consideration that I would have, so.
But we're not, so, but we're, so if, so the only reason, the only way you would accept this property from the generous donors would be if you've got this zoning?
Variance.
Variance.
Yeah, without the variance, the house is useless to us. We would never be able to put anybody there, because in any of our communities, we're not related to one another by blood. I live with two other friars in Radnor Township. We're not related by one, to one another, so.
I'm related to my wife by blood either.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is there a place, isn't there a place on Villanova to, to house the novices? They have many, many, many acres over there, and a lot of living space.
Not at the moment, there is not, and this is, has arisen as a possibility, because the Collerins have very generously offered it to us as a gift.
I understand, I understand, and I'm a tax attorney, and I understand the tax ramifications and, and how all this works, and, and I, I recognize what the issues are, but it is, it is not zoned for that, and that's not what the, the neighborhood has. And it hasn't been, it's been, that was built in the 20s, and that's not what it's ever been. So, and we do have the Eastern Cabrainie and Villanova nearby, so all of them are religiously affiliated, all of them have dormitories, and that's not what this area is, this is single-family residence.
You also were at St. Dennis's when?
Formerly, we were at St. Dennis's, yes.
And Bonner.
Bonner High School, Flower Town, Chestnut Hill, yeah. But because of a lack of vocations, we had to leave all those places. So the training of new members of our community is really something very important, but we're going to continue to do the work that we do.
Could this property be transferred over to the university?
No.
Gifted?
Pardon? There's no way for it to be transferred over?
Why couldn't it?
Because it's not our choice to do that.
No, could it be done, I'm not saying that you would do it.
We, as I mentioned, we agree, we would agree, that if the Augustinians transferred the property or left the property, it would revert back to what it currently is as far as everything is concerned.
Then it would be a hardship at that point, so.
They, they would have to go through their whole process again. Remember, this is unique to just this, to the Augustinians, that's what we're asking for.
You're asking, sorry, what the current property taxes and school taxes are paying?
My wife writes the checks, but, so let me ask you.
They're about $36,000, give or take.
That's fine.
Are there any other Commissioner questions for Father or for Nick? All right, and, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead, and I believe there is public comment to this, to the motion on the floor, so I'll go ahead and call for public comment on, to the motion on the floor at this moment. Thank you, gentlemen. Please, anyone who'd like to speak, please just come up to the podium. I apologize for the cramped, cramped quarters this evening.
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Howard Klein, I'm one of the neighbors. We're, my wife, Lonnie and I, we actually live right below this house, so this is, you can't see it on there, but there's a flag lot that comes off of County Line Road, and it comes down below the house, and my front yard and the backyard of this big house are contiguous. We're right on to the, so when you look out from my dining room window, you see this giant house up there, and Honor Moore is here, she's our neighbor, she also has a house in a flag lot the other side, and is similarly situated, so we are the most directly impacted by what's happening here. And just so you understand, I, I think there have been some, some confusion on what's been presented here. As I understand it, the variance that's being sought runs with the land. In other words, if you give a variance, you're giving a variance to that house, to 489 Upper Gulf Road, that's what gets the variance. And once we go beyond R1 zoning, which allows for no more than one unrelated person to live in a single-family dwelling, you've opened the floodgates now, and if the current, if the proposal would be for the people that are getting it, and they want to then gift it to somebody else or transfer it, the variance runs with the land and they're able to do it. Now I understand what council made the comment about being willing to agree to something, but that's not what the law is. That may be a separate agreement that would have to be, you know? That may be a separate agreement that would have to be, you know, worked out. But as it now stands, what they are seeking is a variance from a zoning ordinance that runs with the land, in other words, for this proposed residence. You could call it a dormitory because we're going to have 10 unrelated people living in one house. And the R1 zoning ordinance for Radnor Township, which was passed by Radnor Township, says no more than one unrelated person can live there. And specifically says you cannot use the premises as a dormitory. That's actually written into the ordinance itself. Now, whether you call this a dormitory or you call it a residence for 10 unrelated people, I think that's just a semantic term. The idea is that we're going beyond the one unrelated person and allowing 10 unrelated people to live there. And the real concern that we have is that, so for it, for these 10 people that are living there, if they then want to transfer the property afterwards, as again, the variance is now changed. Once you let it go and once the variance is granted, it's gone. So once a dormitory, always a dormitory if you want to look at it that way. That is the law. Now, whether they want to agree to something else, that's possibly up and for grabs, but right now, that's the problem. So in essence, what we're talking about and why we're asking the Board of Commissioners, there is a hearing scheduled for Thursday night. And at the hearing, we would, you know, they have to prove that there is a hardship, that that house can't be sold, that it can't be sold as a single family, that it can't be used for any other purpose, and that the use that they're proposing is the least restrictive use. Now that can't be the least restrictive use. Least restrictive use would have two unrelated people, or three unrelated people, or four unrelated people. So the concern is having 10 unrelated people living right on top of us and the fact that once it's, once they're done with it, they can transfer it to somebody else because that is what a variance means. So once you grant the variance, they essentially have the power then to transfer it to anybody else that they want to based on giving it up. So we're talking about changing really the character of the neighborhood from an R1 residential neighborhood where we have all single-family dwellings, or a number of our neighbors are here tonight, and I assume they want to speak to this as well. But we all live in this neighborhood, all expecting that it's going to be a single-family neighborhood, and now it turns out there's going to be a group of 10 unrelated people living at the Tassidy Hill. And for us, it's going to be living right on top of us. So what we really want to do is, is to propose that the Commissioners authorize the Township Solicitor to appear on Thursday night to say that we are in favor of keeping the R1 residential character of this neighborhood where no more than one unrelated person can live, and that we're opposed to granting a variance because the variance is giving it to that property. It's not to these particular applicants, it's to the property and it runs with the property. That is the law. So that's the position we have, and we're asking you to consider sending the Solicitor to make that because I believe Radnor Township has an interest in keeping R1 residential neighborhoods intact rather than having groups of, call them residents or students or novitiates or anybody that, that lives together, you know, it is a dormitory. Whether you call it a, it's for religious purposes or for student purposes, the idea would be exactly the same, and that's what the issue is. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and to address it tonight. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, go ahead, yes, please.
I'm sorry, please wait.
Hope you'll forgive me if I just come here because it's hard to stand there. Everybody, my name is Honor Moore, and I've actually lived in that neighborhood for 76 years. This was the house that my parents, it was built, actually built in 1931 for them as their wedding present. So I grew up in the house, I'm very familiar with exactly how many rooms, et cetera. I also, as Mr. Klein just described where he lived, my property also sits slightly behind. I have a swimming pool that backs right up onto a good portion of the property, and I have a long driveway which is constantly being used by people thinking it belongs to that house. So I certainly am concerned also about traffic and that sort of thing. And even though they might not all have individual cars, I'm sure there has to be a way of getting food supplies and that sort of thing, deliveries perhaps, or whatever. I'm also concerned about a runoff problem that I have right now in my driveway from water that comes down from that property constantly. It's eating away at my driveway, so that's also a concern that I have. And I don't want to see the, the variance. I really agree with Howard Klein that we want to keep it as the neighborhood that it is and has been for since 1931. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. It must be nice.
Thank you for having us. I just wanted to represent the next generation of residents in the neighborhood. My name is Allison Fatozzi. My husband and I bought a home right down the street eight months ago in this neighborhood with our two young children. And we bought this house because of the charming neighborhood, and we saw that this was a neighborhood that was perhaps turning over into that next generation where there would be lots of children running around, that this of course feeds into that elementary school. There are several other houses in the area that are for sale, and it's very unfortunate that your house has been sitting out of the market for quite some time, but we were really hopeful that homes especially like yours that can accommodate so many people would be taken over by nice families that would continue to keep the township thriving with taxes and more children adding diversity to our beautiful neighborhood. This really does impact our family, it does change the demographic of the neighborhood, it does impact the taxes that go into our school district, and we really would love to see it remain a very family-oriented neighborhood like we bought it.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you folks, I appreciate the opportunity to speak a few words to you this evening. My name is Jim Colleran, and my wife is over there, Mary, do you want to stand up for a second? So that's Mary. And we bought the house in August of 1984, so we've owned it for 35 years. And when we bought the house, it had been on the market forever. The people from whom we bought it were exasperated because they said, as did the real estate people who took us through it, no, no house that they had ever shown had been seen more than ours because it is that kind of a special house. It's elegant, it's huge. And it's also very hard to sell. And that's why we were able to buy it in 1984 after it had sat on the market for many, many months, maybe years, I just don't remember. But the owners then had to drop the prices and drop the prices and drop the price and drop the price. And we bought that house for $384,000. And it has more than 10,000 square feet and close to three acres. And we were able to get it, albeit in 1984, for under its intrinsic value. So that we were very fortunate to buy it. Now let me say now, as the house sits there today, it is in much better condition than it was when we bought it. Mention was made before of parking and garage space. When we bought it, it had a single detached garage, which was frankly unsightly. About 15 years ago, we knocked that garage down and put up what I am not embarrassed to say is a magnificent five-car garage, matching the stone of the house precisely from the same quarry. And it enjoys this parking space, a long driveway. And the point of the matter is, intrinsically, you couldn't build that house today. Walls are that thick. However, the downside of all of its elegance and its massive size is that we have had that house on the market for 10 years. 10 years. We have changed real estate agents twice. We had Kathy Thompson, and then knowing she did her very best to market it, people say, well, you know, if a house isn't selling, you should get a different agent. We got a different agent, and we had that agent for several years. And people came through it. The first person to come through it was the former coach of the Eagles. He didn't come through it, Andy Reid, but his wife did. The comments, and then afterwards, we reverted back to Kathy Thompson, who is currently our agent, has been for the last several years, as she was at the beginning of the 10 years. So many people have come through and they give you comments. Most beautiful house, wonderful house, love to raise our family here, but we can't raise a family here. It's too big. We have one child. We have two kids. We have two kids and one's going to college and not expected to return to live in the house after another year. Besides which, it was built, as Mrs. Moore said, many years ago, and it doesn't have the big cathedral, the big open glass windows, and the big open floor plan. It's a lot of large rooms, but many rooms. So that many people who have visited the house in the last 10 years have come with architects and interior designers and said, we'd love to do it, but we would have to put so much money into it to make it the way we want it. So we too are a little fatigued and exasperated, and we've been paying close to $38,000 or whatever it is a year for 10 years trying to market this property. Something's got to give. So in, given the seeming hopelessness of our being able to sell the house, and we've thought of how can we get rid of it, although we still love it, we still have our Christmases there, we raise toward children there. I'm a lawyer, practiced law in the city of Philadelphia and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for 51 years, and I'm recently retired. My wife's a lawyer, all of our four kids are lawyers. And we practice as the Colleran Firm in Philadelphia. We love the place, but the time came where my wife and I are alone now. Before I retired, 10 years ago, we moved to Center City so I could walk to work at Commerce Square in Philadelphia. So we live there now, and it's too big frankly for us to go back to. So then we thought, what can we do? Villanova, to give the, the house to Villanova was never a consideration. We were not going to give the house to a university. Why? Because we envisioned this as a family home, not an institutional home. And therefore, the thought occurred to us that a wonderful occupant and owner of the house would be someone with the kind of stability who in years to come would continue to own and use that house as a family. Now, they may not be a nuclear family of 10 blood-related people, but they will function as a family, and that's what we looked for. Who could maintain the character of the house and, very importantly, preserve the neighborhood? For the 10 years we have not been there, no neighbor can say that we have not taken care of that house meticulously. Leaves fall, they get cleaned up. One of the neighbors wrote a letter saying exactly that. How do we know that whoever the next occupant is will maintain the house the way it's been maintained? In other words, we are and will continue to be emotionally connected to the house. We don't just want to get an occupant there and move on. Our history is there, our family history. We've done a lot for that house, we've done a lot to it. We want to preserve it because in our estimation, it is truly unique. So who other than the Brothers of the Order of Hermits of St. Augustine could we select if we sent out a search committee to give this house to? The Brother of the Order of Hermits. These are religious people trying to bring in potential priests to form them according to the constitution and values of the Order of Hermits. This is not turning over a house to 10 wild kids who have liquor parties and the police have to be called every 10 minutes. Literally, I mean it when I say you could not go out and find a better order than the ones we have chosen to donate this house to. Just think about that. So as I understand the current motion, the movement comes before you, the Board, and says, take a position that this variance should not be granted. How can you possibly in conscience do that? How can you say thumbs down to, to the zoning board that you appointed and send the message to them, it didn't even cut muster with us? We have a lawyer there to speak against this transaction. That wouldn't be fair to me, to my wife, and to the Order of St. Augustine. And think about it from the point of view of the neighbors. Normally, if we weren't gifting this to a hand-selected donee with the assurance that they will care for it and live according to their own values, we could sell this house to God knows who. What would the neighbors have to say about that? Nothing. We're taking the steps to preserve the neighborhood and to accommodate the interests of the neighbors, which have been the same as our interests, to keep this as a safe, secure neighborhood built upon family. So that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. What you've really got to do is know that this is not to Villanova University. I graduated from Villanova Law School and four of my kids did too. But this is not to the university, it's not to the law school, it's to a bunch of priests. I happen to be Catholic, as is my wife, and we have grown to respect and to admire the work of the Augustineians, and especially for the purpose of promulgating their value in the formation of young people whose golden life is to become like them. So that I would respectfully say this is not a use as a dormitory. What is a dormitory? It's a building with steps and individual units occupied by one kid from Kansas and another one from Tennessee with no relationship that is familial in nature of any kind. The six to 10 young men who will come here to live there may not be a nuclear family related by blood, but they're a family in the sense of everyone is going there, having already formed the opinion that they want to be like the Augustineians, and that makes it a family. And I can say with a 100% confidence that it is not in the interest of this township to deny this accommodation, nor does it set a precedent. I'm a lawyer, but I won't step back into my old occupation by arguing the law that's for Mr. Canelia to do. But as a property owner, I say that it is not a good recommendation, respectfully, for you, the Board, to prejudge this issue by sending a lawyer to the zoning board to say the township opposes it. Why would the township oppose this? I've heard the arguments, I understand the position, and I say to the neighbors, I don't blame you at all for raising this issue. I'm here only to say you have no fear.
Can I ask you just two questions? It says, Rich pulled up the, I guess MLS listing, so there's six bedrooms in your house?
There are eight bedrooms.
There are eight bedrooms, it says six here, and you have ten-
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. No, there are eight bedrooms.
There are eight bedrooms, but you would have how many, 10 people living there?
Well, there are, we use it as eight bedrooms. I mean, there are enough rooms that you could get 10 out of it. There's an enormous dining room, there'd be one dining room. And there's a large family room. So it, to me, it would be perfect for, for this kind of use.
I, I just want to say this, you know, you know, I, I feel your pain, but I personally, you know, I believe that the tax base shouldn't suffer because your house is hard to sell. You knew that when you bought it, you knew that it would probably be hard to sell when you sell, when you sold it. I, you know, I'm a believer in the free market. If something's not selling, you need to, you need to lower the price, not necessarily change the agent, but also lower the price and find other, find other ways to-
Lonnie, I'm not here to discuss the tax base or anything like that, I'm just here to give you my position about the familial nature of the transaction- you my position about the familial nature of the transaction we're proposing.
Thank you very much. Are there any other neighbors who would like to speak to the motion on the floor?
Thank you. My name's Bruce Schaller, my wife Karen, I live at 511 County Line Road, which is this house down the street. We've heard the discussion, and we really feel that the nature of the neighborhood has changed, and we really want the neighborhood to reflect the rest of the community. And also, I mean, the variance, as has been pointed out, would run with the property, and that's a really big concern of what might happen in the future, so we definitely support not granting the variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Can I add one point?
Please.
I certainly respect the comments being made by Mr. Coller, and I do wanna correct one thing. The idea here about whether this is a dormitory or not, you have to think about it this way. This is a group of people who will be living there together for one year, and then it will turn over to a whole other group of people who will be living there the next year, and so on. So it's not the same as a nuclear family. A nuclear family with a lot of children who would stay there year after year maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood. It is a, I'm gonna call it a dormitory or a residence, where there's changeover on a yearly, annual basis from one first-year class to the next, one second-year class to the next second-year class, and that's what changes the character of the neighborhood, and that again runs with the land. Just wanted to add that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Nick? Do you have any?
Just one quick comment. Mr. Clark is right that the variance runs with the land, but I believe this board knows and is under discussions now, a zoning board can grant to the, based on conditions, and specific conditions. And you already laid out some of those specific conditions that the Augustineians agreed to as far as the board granted those conditions, which are also with the land conditions.
Anyone else? Any other commissioner comments? All right, I will go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of motion on the floor to send our township solicitor to the zoning hearing board meeting regarding 489 Upper Gulf Road, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Jake, how did you go? Sorry. Motion passes five to two, so the solicitor will go to the zoning hearing board. Thank you all very much. I don't know if everyone wants to stay for the rest of the discussion, if you want to leave. I will give you the opportunity to do so. Take a brief two-second basis. Thank you all for being here.
I'm gonna get my umbrella.
We wanted to make the board aware that today there was a pre-construction meeting at PennDOT to discuss what the scope of work was going to be. What's not included, not included is curves, catch basins, inlets that go to nowhere, sub-base repair, none of that. So basically, it's a Villanova-lay that they're looking at doing. And I think that falls way short of what needs to be done on Lancaster Avenue. There's so many areas that base repair has to be done, curves that have already sunk Many issues, we know we've got outlets that go nowhere, there are crushed lines under the road. I'm asking the board tonight if there'll be any objections to send a letter to PennDOT to the commissioner that says we would, we feel this is inadequate, the work that's being performed. I know there are some thoughts that we'll never see PennDOT again for another 30 or 40 years, but if they're gonna do it, they should do it right. So it would, I'm looking for a consensus with the board, if there's any objections to sending a letter. Currently copying all our state reps, saying that this is inadequate of what the work that's going to be performed.
I have no objection to it, and they should not retaliate, I don't think. And I think that, you know, if they do try to retaliate by, you know, withholding services, then we have to call them out on that. But hopefully, in the spirit of cooperation and fair play, they wouldn't even think of anything like that.
So would your letter include, "We don't want you to do the work. It's subpar, don't do the work."
It is just, it's insufficient of the work that is necessary, and I would have Steve outline all the items that need to, that should be corrected as part of, that any room should be done.
Do they need our permission?
Do they need our permission? If they don't need it, then they'll have a very difficult time doing work here.
So we're, so we're basically stating that we think that your plan is subpar. We would prefer that it have these items in it or these items addressed, and then they could go ahead and just do what they wanna do anyway?
They could.
I guess at least we go on record as saying that we thought it was a crummy job.
Yeah.
It is a crummy job. We try.
Yeah, we, yeah.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Is there any objection to the letter?
No. We'll craft. Thank you.
So consensus, thank you. Onto Resolution 2019-47, authorizing the removal of 13 trees along the stream quarter at Anki Park.
Let me be mad, President. After the snack bar incident, we had the arborist look at the pines running along the creek behind the park. They're in the area of the playground and the batting cages, so he identified 13 trees out of 30, and this is the scope of work and the price.
Before we have discussion, can I get a motion to approve the motion, the resolutions? Do I have a second? Okay. Is there any, I'm sorry.
As part of this, we have received 88 trees in donation from Cabrini College. These are the size of the trees, which are significant in size compared to anything that we have planted. These would be earmarked to go right as soon as those trees come down to put these up, though there are other areas in the township that trees have come down, like by Anki Wood, the trees came down, where the ash trees came down. Friends of Rattner Trail Park, there were some trees that were removed, they were in bad shape. These will go back in there, as well as we will be looking at other locations. So we are making a commitment to the trees that have come down that, through the assistance at Cabrini, these are significant trees that would go back. So I think in all the parks, we could use planting of trees, additional trees as part of this.
I can just say, from a father who has coached runnerway in Little League, whose son plays on Anki B, we hit balls into the creek and in those trees all the time. So if those trees are not in good shape, you could have limbs that fall and hurt these people trying to fish out foul balls, so I would support this.
Any other questions to the motion on the floor? Is there any additional staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-47, authorizing the removal of 13 trees along the stream quarter at Anki Park, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So you are opposed, and Jake, you're opposed. Motion passes five to two. Thank you, gentlemen, for the assessment, and thank you for moving forward with the replanting, which is something that we had talked about.
Absolutely.
When we looked at some of these other issues. And do we need to thank Cabrini, formally thank Cabrini for all the trees?
Yes, we plan on trying to bring it to one of the board meetings to do that, but as part of the township, it's needed to replant a number of trees, as was requested in the last budget, another significant number, so you will again see that number come at you, which I believe we have special meeting entries as well. I mean, the fact that...
And how many trees was it again? 81 trees?
Eighty.
Eighty each.
Forty-inch balls.
Nice trees.
I'll start planting my acorns in my pixie cup to get them going.
And I would like to thank John Hasebeck for coming out and looking at these trees. I think he's done a very good job of identifying those, so I'm guessing, I'm guessing that the no votes were against the removal of the trees, so I don't know. If that was the case, maybe he could propose something like that, like freezing, so we would, and Stephen, his staff would not be able to do that.
Any comments?
Talk about it offline.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for having planned for replanting, which is something I know we had all talked about as being very important as we look to take down these trees. All right, moving on, so a discussion of capital funding projects. Mr. White?
All right. This is picking up where we left off two weeks ago at the last special meeting. We had distributed with the board packet a list of projects that met certain aspects or certain criteria that we discussed at the end of last meeting, so I could step to those now. I'll start. One of the, one of the criteria was that we were hoping to make this budget neutral, so limit the borrowing so that the new debt service doesn't increase or be greater than the amount that we know it's going to drop going into next year. So just real quick, the amount of the debt service decrease for 2020 is about $420,000. In rough dollars, a $7 million borrow is going to cost roughly $455,000. You know, without getting it down to the dollar, that's, that's probably doable. That's pretty, that's as close as we'll get. Plus the $65,000 is a, is a bit of an estimate. Just for comparison's sake, the last time we did a long-term fixed borrowing was in 2016, early 2016. Those were 30-year bonds, and they ended up costing roughly $50,000 per million. So I'm using a slightly higher number, assuming a shorter term. Interest rates haven't moved that far since early 2016, so, I mean, we're in the, so $7 million's kind of the target number that we're shooting for to meet that goal. That being the case, these are the projects that were identified. Again, we were trying to identify ones that were discussions had been going on for some time, either that, either other financing sources have been identified, either through grants or other funds, or contracts have been actually entered into, like with the pedestrian bridge over at the Rattner Elementary Memorial Field area. So these are the, this is the list of projects. It's organized a little bit differently on the screen than what was included in the packet. I broke it up based into two broad categories of something that would be considered a new asset or a significant expansion over something that already exists versus a replacement of an existing asset. And then we have the, the types of projects broken down between facilities, infrastructure, sidewalks, trails, and signals. The first one is the fire company, the preemption device, that would allow the Rattner Fire Company to hit the device before they roll out of the station, and it would affect the signals at North and South Wayne in Lancaster and turn them green and give the guys driving the trucks enough time so that the intersection clears out by the time they're out of the station and rolling on that intersection. That's a safety issue that they've raised going back two years ago, so that's why that's included. We have two infrastructure projects, a Morris Road streetscape and the Rosemont Gateway enhancement. I'll let either Steve or someone go into the details of the projects themselves. With regard to the Rosemont Gateway, I could tell you that that project was discussed back before 2010, and it's just not a project that's, that's received funding in any of the years. And in fact, the township let a small grant lapse due to lack of funding, but that one's on here. I don't know if anyone wants to go into detail on the Morris Road, the streetscape one. Nope? Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that one. So that's $825,000 for one road. What are we doing over there? What would that be?
So these are very high level because we don't know the full scope of the project, but the basic scope of the project was to replace all the existing trees, remove and replace all the existing trees. We actually met with residents, provided various samples of trees suggested by our arbor, replace sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as the curb, put granite curb in. Where the number prepped up was, we do not know if it was gonna entail storm sewer work on the street. If it doesn't, price would be considerably less than that, but the project really hasn't gelled, so we don't have a scope, so, but that's the basis, basic part of the project.
Steve, just a couple questions. Does Pico, Pico has to go into Morris Road at some point here to do work? Would they be picking up some of this, some of this work?
So the most you're gonna get from Pico is if they do go in, they're gonna replace their gas lines and do all that, and then they'll resurface, they're required to resurface the single lane that they've disturbed, but it would do nothing for us as far as the curbs, sidewalk, trees, or even the storm sewer for that matter.
And the problem that we've seen on Morris Road is trees were planted in an area, wrong tree for that area.
Right, so we have...
They busted out all the curbs.
We have trees that are too big for being under the wires, we have trees that are uprooted sidewalk and curb, so our arborists came up with, I think commissioner was there six or seven very specific trees for different sides of the street, where there were utility wires, would be the smaller tree, although very pretty, and on the other side of the street would be, would be larger trees, and the folks would have a chance to, you know, have their input and pick their trees.
There would no longer be a single tree on that road.
Right, no monoculture.
As we've heard before, so they're re-selected.
So that's the, that's the street with all the beautiful cherry trees?
Yes, it's absolutely beautiful in the spring. It's like my favorite street to have to drive by.
If you go and look at the trees, though, they aren't gonna last much longer.
I'm sure. And that streetscape isn't gonna be there in 10 years. You're gonna have big gaps where you have trees out. This is where Bob and Bill and Steve talked about planning for the future. This is what the project is, is planning for the future. And, you know, Steve can attest to this. There have been two town hall meetings on it. First was held in October on a cold night, and then there must have been 35, 40 residents out there, all interested. Some were lucky at first, but a lot of those have come around and where they didn't want a tree to begin with, they're asking for trees. So they want to preserve what the tree, that street looks like now, because they understand that it's not going to look like that in three years.
When we met on the street, we were standing there with the arborist, the manager, the commissioner, and we were looking at how beautiful this one cherry tree was, and he said, "Walk over here." And we walked around to the other side of the tree, and there's this huge gaping hole in the tree, so it's not gonna be there, and commissioner's right. What you see now won't be there, so this project will plant and plan for the future.
So those trees are planted in the right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and because they were planted by the township or somebody, whatever, however many years ago, because they're obviously very old, I'm guessing, they have disrupted the sidewalk, the trees in our right-of-way have disrupted the sidewalk, which is why you think it's our responsibility to fix that sidewalk? Or replace the sidewalks, or?
We have an obligation for the sidewalk since there are trees. At one point, the street trees, those in the right-of-way, were not the township's responsibility, and I'm not sure who made the decision to take those back, because that's added a significant cost to the township with those trees.
I'm sorry, can you, so those trees are now our responsibility?
Yeah, now our responsibility, correct.
Okay, and they have disrupted the sidewalk?
Correct.
So that is why you're recommending that we would foot the bill for the sidewalk? Because I always thought once you put a sidewalk in, then the sidewalk became the responsibility of the residents.
It would.
But these trees, there are some significant sidewalks that have been damaged from the trees.
Commissioner, this could be a example of a streetscape for other streets in the township as a project.
But should one of these people decide to sell their house next week, codes go over there and tell them to replace sidewalk, right?
Which they're doing right now. We have
Yes. But on some of those though, if there are trees that are breaking the sidewalks, we should be taking that tree down immediately.
And the residents are in favor of this?
Yes.
Yes, they were.
What's the length of?
I don't know offhand, Commissioner, I'm sorry. I had, I had that information, but not.
Is there any other flowering? I mean, that is by far, I think, one of the prettiest streets in all of Pratt. Is there any other flowering tree that you're looking at that could keep that?
We don't have those now, but we can, we can provide those. There was a
Some kind of flowering cherry, yeah.
There was a pallet of different trees that residents
There's tree lady in the back. Well, there were two trees. Well, they, the neighbors have selected the trees. There are two that have, that were flowering, if I remember correctly.
Is it for the entire length of Morris or from Cedar Brook down to South Devon?
I'm sorry, it's basically South Devon
To Clover.
To Clover.
To Clover?
Because Wawa's been planted already. I mean, we could continue on the yeah, on the
Actually, it's Cedar Brook, Clover turns it, where it turns, you know, according to Google at least. All right, so that's my question, sorry. So that's the section that we're talking about.
And that's why we didn't, on the paving program, we didn't do the other section of Morris because if this project goes through, we didn't want to have to sift through our new paving. If it doesn't, then we move forward.
And you think that that 825 is like a high, on the high side?
It, so we
Because of the storm water? I'm not sure.
So
We know how Steve's estimates work.
Bills were to hold until
I'm done with that then. I'm not going to reduce that one penny. Now, it depends how much work we get into, but we haven't done the engineering, so we don't know. We've done survey, we've had the arborist out there, but that's as far as we've gone. So this is just for magnitude, period.
Can I just ask a general question? I mean, I could hold it to the end or ask it now, but specifically, when it comes to a project like this, explain to the residents and myself, like what happens if you go under budget and you can look at the whole bond or one specific item in here? If you're, say, $300,000 under or $300,000 over? I guess that depends on if this is a bond, like a flat-out bond issue or this is a line of credit. I don't want to stop as you're going through everything.
Sure.
But if you want to answer that at the end, just kind of, you know, if it's kind of pull the money as you go, great, you didn't need it, no harm, no foul. Do we issue all those bonds knowing that, well, we can only do five projects a year, and there's 10 projects here, so?
Yeah. Yeah, in all likelihood, well, let me, let me back up. First of all, the line of credit is probably the better way to go, or a drawdown loan. Because if we do come in under, then we're not obligated to pull the full amount. Although, as I say that, I'm not, we, we, as soon as we enter into that look, that borrowing agreement, we could be obligated to borrow the full amount regardless of whether we get it all upfront or if we do drawdown. So hold on that. But in the event, if we have, if we borrow the full amount and we have a project that comes in significantly under and we have leftover funds, the wording in the ordinance is broad enough that projects could be added. And that, those funds could be used for other items. At any point, if we need more money, we could supplement the project listing with another borrowing. We could put general fund dollars in. We have options there. So we're, we would be by no means tied to this specific list with these specific amounts. Things can be moved around because again, the legislation is broad enough that while we'll identify this list as an exhibit, it, funds can be moved between projects, things can be added instantaneously. And along those same lines, if, if we proceed with this list or some version of it, while we should stick to it as much as possible, that each project as they get designed and ultimately constructed, will be back in front of the board for specific review. So the real detail-related questions will be answered at those times.
So as part of the design requirements, there's also an estimated probable cost of construction. So we're trying to estimate a project that we only know a piece of. But as a design proceeds, it's a requirement we put in the contract that when we go back, we wouldn't have much tighter numbers.
Yeah, I'm sure you have a variance of one or another, but just in, in general, you know, have these things, you know, you knock down a wall, figuring it's, and then you yeah.
Not to Steve.
Yeah.
Bill, weren't the Tap Trail and the Radnor Trail Extension also funded partially by the 15 line?
Yeah, yeah, I, and
All of them?
I was going to get, yeah, as we went through, I was going to identify all of those. For example, we have the King of Prussia Glen Mary sidewalk, that's partially funded with the grant. Same with the North Wayne sidewalk. There's grant funds there. Harford, partially funded, we have that in the notes, but yes. The Tap Trail is not funded with the 15 borrowing, that's funded through other grants. The Radnor Trail Extension is significantly funded with the 15 bonds as well.
Is there any way to get this Morris Road, get some grants for this project, at least for the sidewalks or something like that? You know, I guess I'm wondering, you know, when we went, ran through some of the things that you talked about, and we've heard from people, we do need to have some sort of method for trying to, you know, you know, we talked about it last time, we have an extensive list, an exhaustive list of things that have not been addressed. And if we want to try to address some of these, and one of the ways to start that is by doing this bond, and we have the opportunity to do it. You talked about other financing, other funding sources being part of the consideration, contracts that have been entered into with other groups as being part of the consideration. So to me, those are ways to help prioritize. Safety, I think, is certainly something that we can all agree is a priority. So I'm just wondering how this one ended up on there? Is this falling under safety? Is it falling under, is there another level of prioritization we're looking at? I understand the visioning and wanting to, you know, look towards the future around the, you know, certainly the dedication of the township and all of that, I think, is very important, and I, I agree with that. I'm just wondering, you know, for this initial first pass, how that, this project perhaps ended up on this list?
From my perspective, this ends up on the list because the township, as we spoke with at budget time, we are looking at the board to fund an additional $2 million per year. This gives us an opportunity to know what it's going to cost for us to actually go into a replanting type program. Because we've heard from the board that we just don't want to take trees down, taking trees, not putting them back in the ground. There are a number of streets like this that we have where trees will continue to come down. This gives us a good template of how we would go moving forward. To your question about grants, Pico has a growing greener grant. I believe we would sit in a very good spot because there are these trees that are actually tangled in wires. So I think we should do very well on that application.
Did we ever get the five from them for Brinkmore Avenue?
We, I know we received, from McCrory, I believe, we received a Pico grant for that. I'm not sure on Brinkmore.
Well, they were, we were going to use it elsewhere.
So these trees could potentially be a safety issue? They come down?
Well, I would argue, I would argue as a resident in the area, there are a lot of pedestrians walking. Any parent walking a stroller has to go on the road at some point because they're not going to be, be able to get over parts of the curb that have been affected. I would say drivers who, you know, most of these residents park their cars on the street, they're parking with parts of the curb missing.
To the commissioner's point, we actually visited those spots. There are areas with go curb, otherwise a sidewalk. So all that would be fixed. If you wish to go for a grant, you need to have something specific. So I would suggest, at a minimum, you need to get design done. That does two things. It gives you the idea of the cost, and it gives you the specifics for a grant as well as having, quote, "a shovel-ready project" should you be awarded a grant. All those things make your grant application stronger.
And so the 110 in 2019 is to do that, just that, Steve? To do the design work to get a good assessment? Okay. I'm sorry, I just want to understand. I feel like if we're going to say this, then we need to make sure that everything is falling within, you know, some of the categories that we put forward. So I just want to make sure that
To Mr. White's point about the pricing. So the 110 is for a very specific amount of work. As we get into the project, if we, if it's deemed we need to do storm sewer and XYZ, that can change, but that's a budget number for the streetscape, curb, and sidewalk.
And it also raises another good point that I should have made at the beginning of this. When we're looking at these numbers, if there are other sources helping to pay for the projects, we're looking at the net numbers. We didn't want to show all of this. But for each of the projects, if there is something that's helping to fund it, the, there is a credit amount shown in the larger table. So when we pull the summary together, it's just grabbing the net or it's adding all the project costs up. So if the, you're looking at the net numbers here.
Bill, is all the 825 financeable by bond proceeds? Or it sounds like some of that might not be long enough lived. Can you do trees with 20-year bonds?
Let's hope they last long, 20 years.
Plus the curving sidewalk, driveway, because it's also included driveway aprons. All these things are 20 plus.
But so the trees are going to be real property, so that, that's good. You're comfortable with that?
But on the trees, Rich, I was hoping that we've got a property not too far from there where they can't put all 100-plus trees on that single property. And the residents, I believe, have offered to plant elsewhere in the community, correct?
If, if, when he's, he's got 73 planted, if he cannot fit the rest, he will donate that to the township and plant them? I mean, if, if he can plant them, he will.
But that can be somewhere where we can look and save some costs on this project. It's similar, I think.
Yes.
Thank you for indulging.
And then on the replacement side, with regard to the lifts, that's at the Public Works Garage. We discussed that briefly a couple of weeks ago. The lifts there are pushing 15, 20 years old. They don't meet the specifications necessary for today's vehicles and trucks. So this is a safety issue. It's a safety for the guys who are underneath those trucks repairing them. So, and that's a replacement of what's existing there now. Our annual road resurfacing program, being that this year's road resurfacing program did not include the additional funds that are part of the million-per-year allocation, we added an additional line item here of $400,000 to bolster. It would end up being next year's road program, but that would be making up for the stretches of roads that we weren't able to hit this year because of the reduced funding. So that's why that's in there. The Conestoga Road tunnel lighting, that's a legal issue that the township somehow got wrapped into a number of years ago. And ultimately, we were found to be responsible for inadequate lighting down in
Conestoga Road, Rosemont.
Lucas Grove, Lucas Grove, Conestoga.
When you go under the, the high speed tracks there.
Bill, can we just go back to the resurfacing?
Yeah.
We still have one more round coming up
That's correct.
Later this year?
Yes.
What's the time period?
Always 31st completion. It's out the bid now, it's coming to you in the 20th for your approval on the bid, to accept the bid. And we only had, the reason, we only had $800,000 this year. Usually it's a million every year, but we shorted it $200,000. Bill's trying to make up that extra money.
And we used $400,000 because at the end of the day, we had a little bit to give us the $7 million, so. The Matsumford pedestrian bridge, we spent a lot of time talking about that. We've actually, I think that might have started.
That's just, that's just our half.
Can, I'm sorry, it is our half. The total project cost is closer to $650,000, with the schools paying the other half.
Can you go back when you, to the lighting tunnel? Is there, because that's a, I mean, that's a disaster that underpass, especially you can't get a stroller through if you want to go underneath it. It's not ADA compliant, and you said, does it SEPTA or, no, is it PennDOT or Amtrak?
So when we went to court
Or just dome?
It's SEPTA's overpass, it's PennDOT's road. The reason the township is doing the lighting is because we had in previous years replaced that lighting and maintained it. So that's what we're to our solicitor drug us in. But that would be a different project. That would be something to make that pedestrian safe.
Sure.
That's, we'd have to reach out to PennDOT.
Is there any way that we could reach out to PennDOT to see if they could upabsorb some of that cost?
Right after Lancaster Avenue.
Also, they still owe us the overheight vehicle detection system.
Yeah.
Throw that in there too.
Well, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just let them know that.
Eagle Road, Culver.
All right, so then we have the two replacement sidewalks. There's a stretch on Lancaster from Barlecone to Garrett. That's one where we, well, I think everyone's familiar with that stretch. That's a, that is a safety issue above and for that. It's the fact that nothing bad has happened there on the sidewalk is surprising given the traffic and the number of pedestrians. North Wayne, popular North Wayne. That was discussed at the last meeting as well. Then we have the signals, the King of Prussia Pine Tree Eagle improvement project that 355 is the township's share. We have Lancaster Wayne improvements to the signals at that intersection. And then we have the larger traffic adaptive system. That has been talked about for the better part of six, seven years. And that would be tying all the signals in the town together on a, the adaptive system to allow them to communicate better, to help move traffic. That is the extent of my knowledge of that program.
All right, well, let's talk about it before you leave that.
That's what I thought of it. How it does it?
So first of all, for the King of Prussia Pine Tree Eagle, I'm happy to forego that, put that money back. I've made that point several times. Lancaster Wayne, I don't know what that one really is. Traffic adaptive system, 904 is a big number considering Villanova's already put in $170,000. It's an escrow. And Penn is going to put in a million dollars or partner. By the way, we need to have that in place before that building gets opened up.
So Penn's, a lot of their improvements is over a million, but they're specific to the traffic.
It's, I know, it's only in that, it's only in that area. I understand that, but are we sure that with that million, so that we still need another 904? I, that sounds like
This will take us from Sugar Town through, all the way through. And if we can connect other ones as we go, like say, Morris and Sugar Town, we would do them. The main thing, PennDOT classifies Lancaster Avenue as a critical corridor. That's the main thrust, and then everything we could do off of that, we would do.
There's a federal grant coming up that if we want to give all the signals in the township to apply for a grant, which pays 50, I believe, 50% of the cost.
So this will take us from, I guess, Brinmar on Lancaster, on Lancaster and then all the way down to Sugar Town? The adaptive system?
Headmore.
And then even lights that feed into Lancaster?
Well, Villanova was covering from Brinmar down to Eithen, wasn't it?
I thought theirs was just 320.
They're only doing Eithen and St. Thomas Way.
I thought that was 320 and something, 320 in Lancaster?
That didn't make it. It was just St. Thomas Way, which is replaced the other signal and Eithen and Lancaster.
Villanova Center gave us
We have some money from them, but we didn't even get Lowry's.
Can I just ask, if we can go back to the Barlecone at Garrett Avenue sidewalk? I know that in the past that has been grant-eligible. Could we look, see about getting a grant on that? And then also, I didn't know, Bob, if you have reached out maybe to Villanova because it's a majority of their students because of the new dorms that are, that are going to be using that stretch when they walk to Brinmar or CVS and those are big, big area? If they would be willing to help out with some of absorbing some of those costs? Is that something you can do?
We've done an initial conversation with them.
Okay, and ahead of that?
We're awaiting the, what the board does here. If the board, if they're worried on this, now we can go with them and say, here's what we're looking for. looking for.
Okay, and, and look at grants as well to help absorb, kind of have a two problem.
There is one application due to 31st of this month, that's possibly our campaign.
Okay, could we, do you have time to get it done, do you think, here?
You're going to have to pick one project, there's multiples that are already sitting in the pipeline, so, I'm not sure where that...
Can I just ask, can I just ask a question about the traffic adaptive system? So what, what could that potentially mean, so, yeah, I want to be quite frank, there's really nothing on here that impacts 4, specifically, but certainly, traffic is an issue.
Well, one item, if you can, if the annual road program is a makeup of 200,000, one of the concerns that we have staff is Shawmell Park, that is a traffic problem there, the way people park themselves in, we've talked about for several years about adding a parking lot across the street, which, which we could, is often in that area, which would be very helpful, so there's a possibility we could shift 200,000 from the road resurfacing program towards that project.
Well, remember, Bob, we also have this corridor study for Camion Line Road, we have those, we're talking about.
Correct. This would be infrastructure, this would be actual parking lot, so that we could eliminate that, people actually have to back out into traffic, because you've got that, fairly familiar with that area, it's, it's a troubled area.
People crossing over to get in, hollow, hard across the street.
And what we'd like to do is eliminate that parking, that people either park sideways, up over the side, up over the curving, whatever's there now parking into the park, to eliminate that altogether, and actually move people across the street, which would be much safer. Tie the trail that goes, so.
We could buy that land, when Newtown is rated Jason, just by...
But so back to traffic adaptive, tell me what that could potentially look like at 320 and Lancaster.
So it's not a panacea, it's not going to solve all our traffic problems.
Right, the traffic's still, it's still going to go, you, one side goes, then it, then it changes.
There's traffic adaptive systems in King of Prussia and Upper Marion Township, it will help, and in unofficial talks with PennDOT, we believe they will take that system over for us, that we install it, does need to be managed, right, it's not...
Yeah, but if they take it over, then we see how they manage the rest of the township, why would we want to trust them with managing?
The software part of it, the, the actual, because either we hire somebody to do it, meaning another, like we hire a firm that would do it, but it does need to be tweaked as it goes along, but to answer your question, so the system, right now, all our signals are based on, the signals know that a car is there because it's either with a loop detector or a camera, and it runs through a certain cycle based on time, that time can be extended, with traffic adaptive, it is more fluid, it is adaptive to the situations there, but it is not a panacea, volume is volume, it will help clear intersections more quickly, so conceivably, it affects many, many people that use...
Why aren't we looking more at the, that intersection, 320 and Lancaster, but making the two little streets right in, right out, like DVR PC regimen?
They, they had noted that if we got rid of those two legs, that intersection would be...
I believe Villanova will be presenting their long, long-range capital plan, that may be the time you want to discuss that.
DVRP also showed making a...
The Allen's County Ward.
Yes, they showed, using, making a dedicated right turn lane, southbound 320 to westbound 30, which would make a big difference, that's a, that's an intersection improvement project, that's a whole different story.
That's tough because of that little bank.
Well, the problem we've run into recently is the traffic going northbound on 320, making the left-hand turn, heading west on Lancaster, light is off at the Villanova Center, so what happens is traffic is backing up on the curb, and then people going through the intersection, they're jamming in, so both ways, you're tying up the intersection, so it's very problematic, how to judge that.
And then there's a lot of potholes, too, what you're trying to avoid.
They fixed some of those. They fixed a couple, and I'm not just asking about that intersection, I did it and everything.
Basically do that, Philadelphia doesn't, but it's illegal, because there were some questions about whether we could do that, they said we cannot do that.
Can't do what?
What Philadelphia does, don't block the box.
Oh, oh, okay.
And then finally, the last two projects on the list, refer, or regards to the WBA area, we talked about those a couple of weeks ago, with regard to the parking adjustments and the tree planting program. So in total, that puts us a shade under 7 million, the process going forward, if the list is as it is, is we would reach out and work with our, our bond folks, the underwriter and PFM, to help prepare the, and Cozen, the bond solicitor, to prepare the documents. First meeting in June would probably be the earliest, we could have something pulled together, which then puts an adoption at the second meeting in June, and then we'd close by the end of summer, that's about as fast as we could do it.
Not to exceed.
Absolutely, yeah, and between then and now, we would talk with, with, the group would talk, and, and we'd come up with a recommendation on the best way to do the financing, whether it be fixed rate right now, interest rates might dictate that that's the way to go, I mean, keep in mind that this is just 7 million off of a list that still has 27 million on it, so if we're in a situation where projects fall by the wayside due to situations that we can't foresee right now, we, there's other things that we can plug in, so I'm not sure that we're going to be in a position where the money's not going to get spent quickly, which is an argument to make it a fixed rate, finance it, get it and go, but we'll, we'll have a recommendation for the board on all that in June, I would think the first meeting we'd be prepared, but I don't know their calendars either, so I, it could be the second, but at any rate, we would have the money by the end of summer and early fall.
And just back to your calculations up there, where you've got the 2020 drop, the 417, 183, so that's what we would, that's a savings we would be realizing based on what we're paying for the bonds that we're retiring, and then would be realized, and that would, that would just go in the general fund.
Yeah, so in round numbers, if we're at 3.5 million in the general fund this year, next year, if we're guessing, it'd be 3.1, by doing this borrowing, we'd be back at 3.5, so we'd be right back, not just this year, but where we've been for a number of years.
Let me ask you a question. So, let's say we, this gets approved, we get our money by end of summer, it's September, we're also around, how quickly does all this get done, you know, I mean, who oversees to make sure that all this stuff ends, gets done correctly, you know, the, the timeframe to have all these projects done, is it one year, is it two years, is it spread out over multiple years, can you speak to that?
The goal would be substantially complete with most of these within two years.
2020.
The, so on any of the projects that require additional engineering, obviously Steve's going to oversee that, as part of the 2019 budget, we do have the project manager position that'll be filled, I'm sure he's going to be the busiest person in the building for a while, because he's got a backlog of projects that he's caught up on, and then this would be added to it, so, that person would be the one overseeing all of this and ensuring that we're getting our marks, getting the money spent.
We'll also be using different, multiple engineering firms for work, because right now, the firms we have are taxed to the max, so we would bring in other firms to help expedite the timeline of the board to get these done.
We already have them lined up, one thing, Commissioner, and I guess for all the board, so we, if I may, we need to be realistic on the timeline for design, right, so it's going to be, if this gets, whatever gets authorized, it's already May, we still have to get proposals from these folks, so the best you're going to even get started is midsummer to late summer for these, for the design, some of these are long-term designed because they diva, include DEP permitting, if there's DEP permitting for any project, then that just adds months, literally adds months to a project, also, there's scope creep, so if we determine what a project is, that we make lefts and right turns during the design of that project, that takes additional time, cost for the engineering and the project itself, so those are all things that affect it, but Mr. White is correct, that, that is the basic, we're ready to go on a few of these projects?
Yeah.
From a design standpoint, they've been designed, we're sitting, the Conestoga Road tunnel lighting, North Wayne-Poplar to Wayne, which is really Poplar Station, North Wayne, that's ready to go, North Wayne-Woodsworth to Eagle, that's partially complete, but there's, you know, we have a proposal ready to go, to bring it to bidding documents, but, so there's, there's time in these, and the law, so depending on you approve it, and how quickly we get our proposals in, and then you accept those proposals, so a lot of what we planned in 2019 might not be designed in 2019, depending on the complexity of the project.
So what do you need from us, Bill, consensus to move forward and bring this report to us in June?
We'll have to do a bond resolution with this list, right?
Do we have consensus? Yes, Jack, Jake?
Yeah, we'll, we will proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, so next will be, I know we're going to talk about sewer, but with regards to this, because I don't want this to, I don't want this to fall off of our radar, we still have many projects, we still have a backlog, correct? So, I know, Bill, you've talked about trying to develop a long-term plan for how we look at what we've got, and how we continue to look at whether we're coming forward, just because we've got this list doesn't mean something else isn't going to come forward, I know you sent this really great article, which I have read, I think.
Oh, the one from GFOA, yeah.
Yeah, it was a great article with some interesting ideas, I think we've heard, not only from our own board, but from the community as well, that we should probably develop some sort of way of measuring, identifying, you know, weighing the, you know, the, the need, weighing the need, and deciding, you know, what we, what we, and setting some priorities as a board, what we want, do we want to make sure that we continue to keep up our infrastructure? Is it the buildings, is it, you know, what are we, what do we want to do, so perhaps at the next one of these, which will be in June, maybe we could talk a little bit about how we want to set a plan to move forward on those discussions, you know, is it, do we, as a board, need to try again to set some goals, do we want to engage the community in that, I think I heard from the board when we tried to vote on goals before, that we wanted to hear from the community, do we put something in place where we can seek that kind of input, but how do we not, like, this is good, but as you said, we self, what, 27 million dollars worth of projects, and that doesn't count, look could potentially come up, like, oh, we need a new roof here, or we need this, or whatever, so I don't want to just say, oh, we're done, or else we'll be right back where we started from.
Yes, in a few months, when the budget comes back.
Exactly, and I don't want us to be there, because then all of this will have been for naught.
Then we will plan on carving out a piece in next month's special meeting to do just that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
How about just sewers?
Sewers, so the reason why we're here today. All right, so, what I thought I'd do is just start off with kind of doing a real quick refresher on the fund itself and, and all the things that are going on with it, to help set the table on the broader discussion of, well, what do we do next? So this is the Sanitary Sewer Fund Forecast, I know there's a lot going on here, I'll try to put it in pieces and help, hopefully that'll help make it a little bit more understandable, but the underlying, the underlying thing with the sewer, the Sanitary Sewer Fund to keep in mind is that it is a utility, it's, it was designed by our predecessors to be self-sustaining, self-balancing, and in situations where it is not, where it is, it requires general fund transfers to help keep it afloat, that, that reflects negatively on us financially as a township, and how, how we score with all of the different metrics that Moody's uses when they score us, so the intention of the fund is to be self-balancing, and we'll step through how we've been doing with that, but just keep that in mind as we go through. So, I've kept a lot of history here, just because I think it helps to remember, in, from 2010 to 2012, we had positive net revenue, so you're looking at the revenues of the fund and the expenses of the fund here, and these are the net revenues, so in the years where we had positive net revenue, not coincidentally, they were also years where we didn't spend any money on capital, as soon as we started having to spend money on capital, and for the most part, these expenses have been more emergency base, basis than planned repairs, but that immediately flipped our net revenue to negative, and then compounding that is, if you, the, the annual rates are down here, so you can see that, you know, over this period of time, we're looking at almost a decade, up until the last two years, where we've done the 10% increases, the, the rate did not move much, so a static rate, along with declining water usage, and then increasing capital costs, it was kind of a perfect storm of, a perfect negative financial storm for the money, and it's just kind of built upon itself over the last five years, and we chewed through, at one point, we had 2.5 million in fund balance, that was negative at the end of 16, which meant that we were, you know, the fund itself was being balanced by the rest of the township's financial position, and then starting in 17, we actually ran out of cash, so we had to start moving in general fund transfers, in, in total, it's 4.4 million in 17, 18, and so far this year, we were able to return some of the capital funds last year, we'll do more this year, I just, I got to get the paperwork organized, so there will be a transfer back to the general fund this year, and that will help, but as you can see, the, the primary catalyst to flipping the fund upside down was the introduction of capital, along with a, a rate that just is not significant enough, or not significant enough, along with the water usage, to fund all of the activity. The other thing, the other aspect of this, and the biggest expense of the fund through the years, is the RHM expense, and we've seen, in actual amounts, the expense go from just a shade under 3 million to just a shade under 4, so again, that's a million dollars more per year over this span that we're spending to RHM, without any kind of real rate adjustment to, to fund it. So, that puts us in a situation now where we've done two years of rate adjustments, and they've helped, although not significant enough to correct the, the, the overall problem, or the aggregate of all the issues, when we look at 2019, it'll be a year where we're forecasted to have a positive net revenue and help bring the fund balance back up, some of that'll get chewed into when I return the money back to the general fund for the capital projects, but it is a movement in the right direction, again, though, it's being supplemented by general fund dollars, so, we had a little bit of fun when we talked about the different components of the sanitary sewer, so we came up with this graph. Just, just for the record, in case the microphones didn't pick up, Steve Nercini didn't find it funny, but, Steve and I kid a lot, so we have a good relationship when it comes to this stuff. By far, the biggest expense that we have, and, and I'll start by the, the solid line that's basically cutting this in half, everything below the line are things that we have been funding, everything above the line are things that, in an ideal state, we should be funding, and as I pointed out, the rate as it exists today, isn't even covering... And as I pointed out, the rate as it exists today isn't even covering the bottom half of this graph. So we have the RHM payment. This is forecasting 2020's activity, so this is taking this year's amount and increasing it by a small percent. The debt service is a real number, that's an actual number, that includes prior debt service amounts that are owed along with the borrowing that we did at the end of last year. And then the current operations, which includes Mr. Amaran and two other folks along with the other costs associated with running the program, including the administrative costs on the legal side and the accounting side. What's missing from where our funding is a capital, a contribution for capital, and I'll go into a lot more detail on what makes up that number momentarily. But we also identified, and again, we were, we were thinking of this from the standpoint of, if we were building out the system today, what, what would be an ideal state look like? And in order to operate the utility, you would want additional dedicated staff needed to, and Steve could talk a little bit more detail about this, but additional dedicated staff to, for the ongoing everyday maintenance, for the markings, for addressing the issues as they come up, and making sure that the system itself does not fall into a state of disrepair, which is where we're, where we're at right now. And then there's a small amount for equipment associated with a staff, a staffing amount. So when you, when you pull all of that together, I'll jump back over the forecast. We've included an estimate for the current operation, so that's status quo, that's the staffing as it exists today plus some normal cost growth. We've lumped in new staff as well as the equipment associated with those, and I'll go into detail here in a moment. We have our estimates for capital, which I'll go into in a moment, and then we have debt and RHM. And that's, that's the, that's what the fund pays for, that's it. It's, it's pretty focused on those issues. So it's not a situation like the general fund where we've got 1,000 things that we're trying to balance, this is a little bit more singularly focused. And then we have our revenue estimates, and obviously, the biggest one is driving off of the current year rent. There are smaller amounts generated through late payments, connection fees as they come up, miscellaneous charges for folks that need a certification when they're selling the house or other little miscellaneous things that come up along with the interest earnings from the fund. So just to take a second to talk about what this 1.4 million is or...
Bill, before you do it...
Sure.
I, I believe the estimates for RHM are low.
Are low?
Yeah, because we're facing this potential for the parallel intercept.
Well, that's a good point. That's not built into this.
Right.
And what's driving these estimates are, and I think we talked about this graph during budget time, but this has the actual rate of growth from 2010 through 2018. And so when you look at the growth as forecasted, it looks reasonable in terms of regular growth, but if we get hit...
Well, it does, plus Stephen's crew have been doing a hell of a good job with INI, but sooner or later, that well's going to go dry.
Well, I think a systematic replacement of the lines too will help with the INI.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just wanted, just when we're looking at these forecasted amounts, it's not capturing any kind of adjustment for that, that huge, that capital expense that's looming out there. So when we look at the staffing component, here's what we've, we've looked at, is a three-man jet crew, a camera crew, an actual sewer maintenance crew, one person for, to do the markouts, and an administrative assistant.
What's a markout? I'm sorry.
It's a PA well call that goes out for every construction job, anybody that's digging in Pennsylvania or anywhere in the country, they're Pennsylvania, you dial 811, and then everybody who has a utility in the area of where the dig is going to be has to mark the utilities there.
So we're suggesting hiring our own person to do that, or does it stay?
I currently do that now.
You do that now?
Yes.
And you do a fine job.
Thank you.
How much, Steve, just...
So let's save that much.
For context, how much time are you spending?
Some days.
Yeah.
We do between probably 30 and 50 one calls a day. You could have a one call that could take you a week, you could have a one call that takes you no time at all.
So Steve, you're, you're going out and marking all the lines, so where the gas lines are, where is that?
No, I'm just marking just the green lines.
Just the green lines.
Just the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer.
Okay.
It's owned by the township, so all the green lines get put down by me and the other two guys that do marketing.
Somebody from Pico needs to mark out the electric and the other.
So then that's our responsibilities, okay. So by call, you come, Pico come.
Just for the sewer mains, we don't mark sewer laterals, just township sewer mains.
Okay.
And then, I mean, the other aspect of that is, all the time he's out marking, I mean, that's, no one's, no one's maintaining the system. There's still a system blowing...
I don't think people realize that's us doing that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's us.
I didn't know. I thought it was somebody that states it.
We have three guys, me and two other guys, so.
That even includes with the tree planning program, you have to go out and do those markings.
Yes. Any, any type of construction, anybody digging, any excavation, we go out and do a one call.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And then in developing the different crews, there's obviously going to be some, some equipment that's associated with that. Most of that's pretty low cost in terms of some of the other numbers we've looked at. But obviously, the biggest one would be the jet truck. That's the, the most expensive piece of equipment needed to, to go in and actually clean the sewers out on a regular basis. So in total, it would add roughly 1.5, 1.6 to the fund. And again, we're identifying a program that if we were building it today, this would be a little bit more in line with what would be necessary to, to stay on top of it. One of the things that we were talking in preparation is, and again, we talked about this at the beginning of the last meeting, is we forget just how much infrastructure and assets we own. So it came up that, you know, we own currently 130 miles plus or minus a pipe. And that, we have three guys that run around all the time, mostly marking them, but when they're not marking them, you know, doing what they can to plug holes and keep it operating. And then on top of that, we have roughly 1,600 manholes. So it's a significant infrastructure program. And it, and that just, that resonated with me when I heard it earlier today, because again, you get lost on the dollars, but when you think of 130 miles of pipe running underground, it's, it's pretty significant.
And we currently have so many people who manage that. Steve, can you?
Yep.
Yep.
Those are the pump stations as well.
We have innumerable contractors. I, I can tell you two things on this, Bill. You didn't really notice the financing proceeds, so we, we've already borrowed 4.5 million dollars. So you didn't highlight that, but we put money into this to cover this, and...
Yeah.
18 and 19 are in the right place, right? We're plus, we're on the plus side, 18 and 19. So we're doing, we're, we had some, some high expenditures for capital, like people in their house, sometimes the refrigerator breaks at the same time as the dishwasher, and you gotta replace them both, so you're a little bit under budget, so you have to use the credit for a little bit and pay it off and get back, but we're getting back in order. But 1.4 million dollar plug, that is a huge number. All those people, yeah, it's 130 miles of pipe, but it sits in the ground, it's gravity pipe, most of it. It doesn't, doesn't take that much. 1.4 million sounds way over the top. I don't buy 1.4 million for new staff. We can, we can, we can look at outsourcing where we need, getting the expertise, but putting 1.4 million dollars worth of staff to, to cover this, I just, it sounds way too high and, and out of line with what we've had in the past.
Well, and I would say, one of the things we looked at, and the discussion was last time, is this has been a political utility, because no one's willing to raise the rate this much or take care of the infrastructure. So to make it what it should be as a public utility, this is what it costs to maintain what we have. Because before, we have been put into a situation...
We increased it two times, 10%, it's 20% the last two years.
Did you vote for it, my neighbor?
No, I didn't vote for it. But we, but I did vote for it, but we, but we did it though.
But I will say though, that the system...
I paid it.
The system is crumbling. The system is in bad shape. We know that in North Wayne and South Wayne, two systems are shot, that are going to take significant money. Now, we can continue to let these break, we've been fortunate that the brakes have not backed up in the people's homes. We run a very thin line of when that's going to happen, where this will back up in people's homes. Steve, I'll just let you speak to this, because this is the gentleman that works with it, of really where we're at right now, because I don't think anyone understands the magnitude of, of the issues we have. Steve, you know? If, and before Steve, before you go, I just, I do want to touch on the capital, because it's, it's an important aspect of this, and then Steve, you can go ahead and go. But the capital, we, for the 4 million, 4.5 million we borrowed, there's 4.5 million in projects. So that's a, that's a net zero on the bottom line, and we still needed 4 million dollars of general fund just to get the numbers to start to turn around. An ideal state, or actually, what we should, where we should be at is zero general fund transfers and positive numbers. So the capital's in here, it's accounted for, it's part of what we've done, but we're still not there. We're still having to throw all this general fund money at it. And I, I mean, I would argue, like, what else could we be doing with 4.4 million dollars that left the general fund and had to come here?
Well, again, Bill, look at your line 26 right there shows it. K and L, going in the right direction, we have covered it, and that wasn't general fund money, that was money we borrowed from a new credit facility.
No, it's, it's credit and general, let's all zero those out, like we never transferred the money. It's, it's upside down still. There's, there's still a gap in funding.
But we did borrow it, and we did put it in, so we covered it. And we are, we, nobody is, nobody's objecting to covering, replacing the sewers that are, that are 50 or 100 years old, we have to do it. So let's do it. And we, and Jack and I have met on this, and we've met with the Public Works Group, I mean, obviously, we have aging infrastructure, we need to make sure this is maintained and replaced, and I, I think we, we need to do that. I don't think anybody objects to making sure that the sanitary sewer system is operational and replace, if it's broken, if it's crushed, needs to be replaced. If somebody crushed it, we should get them to fix it, but if something's 100 years old and made out of terracotta, it's time to replace. And I don't think anybody, I don't think any of my taxpayers would object to that, and I know certainly.
Well, there's, there's a lot of terracotta pipe in North and South Wayne. So anybody, just a brief thing, the terracotta pipe was put in over 100 years ago, a lot of them. So it's all put in, in two-foot sections, three-foot sections, or four-foot sections. Each one of those was just stuck right into the back of the other one. A lot of it's in people's yards, some of it's in the street, it takes in groundwater, and it takes in a lot of groundwater. So through each one of those joints, water seeps in there through rainstorms, that would be considered infiltration. Inflow would be considered, somebody who has their sump pump tied into a sanitary sewer line or their downspout lines. So that's the difference between inflow would be downspouts, sump pumps, infiltrations, groundwater getting into the system.
And sometimes basement drains too go in there.
Basement drains, also.
No, I can prove that.
So anyway, all that water's getting in there, and even though this terracotta pipe may not be the majority of pipe in your ward, most of the time, the terracotta pipes that are letting in all this water, all that water's flowing through your ward, because all the sewage goes out of the township, down at Radnor 1, which is down at the end of Sprawl Road, going out of the township into Marble Newtown, and the other place that's leaving the township is through Radnor 2, which is the chained area right down by the Blue Route off of Brimmar Avenue. So that's where the majority of all our sewage leaves the township. So it could start here, but that's where it's going to. All that groundwater is getting into the pipes and filling those pipes. So we're paying to treat all that water going into RHM. So we need to eliminate the water in the bad areas getting in, and that starts with all the terracotta pipe replacement. So we would decrease costs going into the Delphora line, but the lines need to be replaced with better plumbing.
And Luke brought this to us, several years ago, he talked to me about Midland Avenue, other, where we have high water table that's especially affecting this, and we have the old pipes. And we also had this come up on Bradbury and, and Farm, not Farm, but...
Banbury.
Banbury, yeah, Banbury. And, I mean, we were, we were, we were gonna replace it, we were gonna open up, replace everything in the street, remember? And we, we decided not to go with that project, but that was part of it as well. So I, I think that we, we recognize that a lot of this is happening, and Luke and I talked about this, and I told him I supported fixing those, those terracotta pipes at his ward. The, where we got a little bit hung up was how far we replaced, the homeowners have to reconnect and, you know, what, you know, that's, but that's the details we have to just work out, and, you know. So I, I think we're, I'm supportive of it, and I think that everyone here is.
Bill?
I'm sorry, township's only responsible for the sewer mains.
Right.
So the lateral leaves your house and connects into the sewer main, which is generally the four-inch pipe that leaves your house. The box into our line is all the homeowners' responsibility.
Right.
So if that line happens to be, you know, some houses, that line may be five feet long, you know, from where it leaves their house and goes into the main. Other places, it could be 200, 300 feet.
Right.
And that's theirs.
And that's theirs.
That's theirs.
But when we replace these mains, we have to get these laterals fixed too.
Right. Well, we're not fixing the people's laterals, we're just connecting them back to our main.
But remember, we're asking, we're telling the art constituents, we're fixing the pipe and you need to fix your piece.
Oh, well, that's a separate issue.
Right, it is a separate issue, but it's important because it's real money to the constituents.
Bill, can I ask a question? Can you go back to the sewer? I, I look at this ironically, and I know that it comes down to money, but the big thing or the elf in the room that we're not talking about are two different things. Can you scroll all the way back down? Which is possibly technology and possibly climate change. So, and if you can actually scroll down to usage, I saw your usage goes to, next to nothing.
There were kids, it's here, there's...
Scroll, no, no, if you scroll down.
Sure.
No, 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 right there, water usage. So I mean, what you have forecasted is that's gonna take a big hit. So then my question is, and I don't know if there's a way to overlay that, with years when we have above-average rainfall, does our, does our usage go down as opposed to up? Have you? So then, is this, so then would it be an issue of better technology, machines using, washing machines, dishwashers, toilets?
The issue of the INI, as Steve noted, when we get a graph, we get a chart every month from RHM that outlines our usage, and there is a direct correlation to rainfall and increased flows, which is what Mr. Amaran talked about, that's infiltration.
So it's gonna go.
So when a wet year, more water, not sewage gets into the pipes, and just as Steve said, we're paying to treat that. And then you have the problem, because RHM deals us on sewage, water going down the line.
Right.
And we're going to the customer on order usage. So on a wet year, they're not ordering their lawns.
Yeah.
So their use goes down, but meanwhile, our flows go up. So when there's a heavy rain, the spike in the graph is huge. It's huge.
Okay, because it actually is. So would, would a new pipe prevent that?
The new piping, like, take Midland Avenue, everybody talks about Midland Avenue and what we're going to do here. You need to decrease the flow before it gets to Midland Avenue, because when the flow gets high, the sewage is high in the pipe from out here at the township building all the way down to Radnor 2. So the pipe's already full, there's nowhere for it to go, so...
And actually, what happens is, Steve was at one of the intersections, there's so much water infiltrating, it actually blows the manholes off, and actually, it comes up out of there.
I've seen that. No, I've seen that. Then if you can, just a couple more questions, and I have, you can go back up to where it was. So those three numbers, a couple a little higher, a little more, there you go. The, the ones, the 1.7, 1.1, 1.153, yeah.
Yep.
That was added in there? We had, we...
What's that? Those were transfers from the general fund to the sewer.
So we're transferring 1.45 million this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Borrowed the money.
Well, there wasn't enough cash in the fund to make our first order RHM payment, so we needed to move cash into the fund.
So when we do, when a pipe breaks and we fix it, I guess I'll ask you, are we doing the quick fix, or are we doing the 30-year fix?
It depends what the break was. If it's something that was hit during a construction project, and the rest of the pipe's in good shape... shape, we can do a spot repair. Something that happened like Coniston Road over this past winter, it was a transite pipe, it deteriorates from the inside out. So, we had a very bad spot at a manhole, but that whole, that whole run of 300 feet was bad. So, when we went in and did video inspection online, we could see the pipe just delaminating from inside, and there were huge pieces of pipe falling in all along the 300 feet. So, to do a spot repair there, we would have done 25 spot repairs in that section.
So, you're putting a higher-quality pipe in?
Yes.
And how long, what's the lifespan of that pipe?
The pipe that we put in there, which was a, we pulled pipe through there, an HDP pipe, is well over 100 years for that pipe.
So, 100 years, so, put that in. Okay. So, the fixes going forward, when we dig up these pipes that are corroded and they're having groundwater seep through, we're looking at 100-year fits. So, the legacy going on for some of this stuff would be 100 years. And I know that it's a problem if you live in a large house and, you know, you have two, three, maybe even, you know, depending on where your house is situated, where you hit the line, you could have close to a tenth of a mile sometimes. That's an issue with the homeowner, but.
But we were able to slip that pipe with plastic pipe.
And the plastic?
But we could pull through that, but that was transite pipe, which is the old asbestos-type pipe. And we could pull through there. There are situations where you can't do that, where it has to be actually dug up and replaced in place.
Because of, because of laterals.
Well, every lateral connection still has to be dug up. So, every connection in has to be a separate hole, but for the entire length, you save, you know, the excavation cost and the backfill cost and the paving cost for everything, but, you know, there was, I think, five lateral connections there, or six lateral connections, so we just dug those six spots, you know, just a square hole.
So, okay, so like, yeah.
But where there's cast iron pipe or pipe encased in concrete.
Yep.
Pipe bursting's not an option because you can't pull through it.
Okay.
So, certain situations, certain pipe replacement works in different situations.
Sure, but.
Each one's separate.
But possibly, but for the majority of a lot of this pipe that we're gonna have to have replaced, we can put a pipe in that's gonna last 100 years. So, I don't want to say that we have to forget about it, but it's, you know, we're have to, we can sleep a little bit better knowing, yeah, in 100 years, we're gonna have to.
Everybody in this room can forget about it.
Yeah.
Well, for yourself.
In 2020, they're gonna be cursing us, like, I can't believe they did that so crappy.
Well, the big thing is you're not wearing that unsealed joint every two or three feet.
Well, yeah, okay, but I mean, there's obviously maintenance that you're gonna have to do, but I've talked about the whole, if we redo the infrastructure.
Yes.
Okay.
Steve, if you can speak to the issues of where some of these run underneath homes and buildings, the depth of some of these sewer replacement goes.
So, back, way back when, when the township was first being built, and there was really very few properties in the township, they were just big farms. As all that stuff got subdivided and building started to occur, houses, commercial buildings, everything was built right on top of sewer lines. So, even though a lot of people's laterals from their houses run through their neighbors' yards, maybe they don't know it, when they find out that they have problems and then find out that their lateral does run through their neighbor's yard and find out the complications involved in that, they don't really know what's happening. But we have sewer mains, a lot in North and South Wayne that run under buildings that are very deep. We have manholes in those areas that are inaccessible, meaning that they're very dangerous for somebody to enter. We're talking about manholes that are 18 to 22 feet deep, that are straight down. If you wanted to enter one of those manholes, you literally have to go down like this on a rope. There's nowhere to move when you get down in there.
Sure, I mean, it doesn't matter, someone's gonna have to go down there, whether we keep this or the elephant in the room, is if we sell, someone's gonna.
Some, they need to be replaced.
It's gonna have to get replaced by someone.
Yeah, it's gotta be replaced.
So, if it's unsafe, it's unsafe.
Right.
Doesn't matter who's gonna replace it.
Yeah, it's gotta be replaced either way, but a lot of these manholes are in these runs of the very old terracotta pipe that run under these houses and buildings.
Okay.
So, you know, we have them identified.
Yeah.
We need to, you know, get the funds together and start replacing some of this stuff before it does get bad.
And just reroute and abandon places where you can't get to it.
Can you, or is that cause like sinkholes?
Fill it up with grout and abandon it.
It's possible, depends on the situation.
Yeah, every situation's different.
You know, something's gonna be in place.
Then you gotta go get easements from property owners, so.
Nature of business.
But things have to be done, one way or another, things have to be done, and it's better to do it in a planned stage than doing under emergency. It's gonna be a lot cheaper, the job goes much better, you don't get as many complaints, and everything gets taken care of in a timely fashion. And that's why you see PICO and Aqua out there replacing all their lines. They know their whole, their age, you know, a lot of these lines they're replacing is because they have leaks in them all the time. You know, they dig in the same spots, they dig on Llewella Avenue all the time, they dig up by Maplewood Road and Coniston all the time. You know, the gas leaks are always in the same spot. As soon as they fix one spot, it breaks five feet down. So, you end up going back to the same spot. It's the same thing we do in sewer, we go back to the same spots, not every time, every time.
Is there a way that if we do, or when it's dug up and eventually, you know, you'll pay the pipe or one way or another, that we will work with either PICO or Aqua or, you know, any other entity that has maybe even cable that has their lines, they have underground lines, to make sure that we don't have to keep digging up the roads and digging up the?
I think the interesting point is, a lot of the replacements that are going in, Steve, why not, they're pressurized lines, so they can put them in the ground, and because they're under pressure, they can go any which way, these have to fall on gravity. So, it's gonna be tougher as they're doing all these replacements, is how this goes. And Steve spoke to me on this, is what kind of hook could we put into PICO and Aqua? Because once we start now, they've already got the priority, and then how do we navigate through that? But again, they're regulated under the DUC and.
And then, just one more question. Would this, could this potentially increase the amount of people that elect not to use our sewer and use septic? And then, if you use septic, you don't have to pay the sewer fee, correct? So, septic. How would you pay the sewer?
Septic is, so that is from us, I'm gonna tell you anecdotally from any Realtor in the township, to be on public sewer is what you want for your house.
Sure, I agree.
From a personal standpoint, to have a system in your yard for onsite precludes you doing so much more to your yard. If your yard, the Commissioner Booker's point, we've had a lot of systems that weren't able to infiltrate this year, our stormwater systems.
I make a point of that every time it comes up.
That applies to our sanitary sewer, so if you're gonna do an onsite system, you have to get the perk, you take up, it's, I don't see somebody jumping from public sewer to onsite.
Well, wouldn't we approve that?
No, we've only approved onsite systems for folks that have a failed system, need to replace it, or cannot access public sewer.
We have, we've approved a couple.
Yeah, but if they can't, because of sewer moratoria, but nobody does it because they want to. Everybody wants to be on public sewer.
But do septic, do people that have septic, do they pay, do you pay the sewer fee?
No, no, only to the extent that it's through the general fund and the regular taxes.
Yeah, yeah, but they don't, they don't.
You pick it up.
In an ideal state, that would be happening.
No, but, but there are people, though, that have a cistern or septic, and they wanna keep it. They have no interest in connecting to the sewer. And they make a point of saying, I'm not connecting, don't wanna do it. So, there, you know, there's a lot of people that have no desire whatsoever to connect.
Thank you, and thank you, Bill. I hope the cost savings from the stamps that we saved is half split in sewer and half split in stormwater.
Bill, can you talk about what we'll need to do in order to get to one going forward?
Yep, that's where we're headed. So, we wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the capital, because you'll recall in our graph, we had identified roughly 4.2 million per year. So, where we're coming up with that number is, we have, well, we've shortened the list, but we have some projects that are, have been identified as a little bit more immediate in need. And then, instead of trying to identify every single run of pipe for replacement on a project list, the approach here is similar to what we do with our roads, where we allocate an amount per year. So, the goal would be, on an ongoing basis, where we put, blush, we put roughly $2 million per year into the sewer system. And the reason why that number's higher is because every year, we'd be engineering the next year's installation projects, so there's an ongoing cost for the engineering side. So, you have the ongoing engineering side of the replacements, and then the following year, you have the actual installation of the project. So, again, so instead of trying to identify all the runs of pipe, there'd be a little over $2 million per year to be invested into the system. We also wanted to identify a line to try to capture the emergency repairs, because even in an ideal world, my computer's having, even in an ideal world, we're not gonna get to all the pipes in time, and they're gonna continue to break. The last four years have shown us that. So, there's a line item in the capital plan for roughly a million a year to hit the emergency repairs.
It's tiny.
That way, when we do have emergencies, they're not interrupting the regular systematic replacement of the, of the pipe. And then, in addition to that, we have the pumping stations, most of which are aged and need significant repairs. The biggest one is the King of, or the most costly one is the King of Prussia, where it's gonna require a complete replacement. Is that fair?
So, usually for a pump station, so it's been about 15 years, which is a lot of time in the sewer world, so you'd usually be looking at replacing starters, controls, pumps, so forth. What we're asking for here is a redo of that station. That station is unsafe for our folks. If you wanna take a walk down there, you'll see exactly what I mean. That's our biggest station, that's our most gallons per day, so not only does it need an upgrade from a mechanical standpoint and technological standpoint for its controls, it needs actual structural work to make it safe for our guys.
What's its age, roughly?
I can tell you the last update when we got pumps was about 15 years ago, but I don't recall. The other pump stations, I will tell you, I've been dealing with pump stations in construction, design, and maintenance for over 30 years. Your other pump stations are the Ugos of the pump station world. If you remember what a Ugo was, that's what they are.
They're worth a lot of money if you can find them.
They need to be replaced with stations that are dependable and easily repaired, and that's how we have them lined up.
So is our sewer system.
I think of them as the Stutz Bearcats.
No, sir, they're the Ugos. They're not Stutz Bearcats.
1920 Stutz Bearcats.
They're the Ugos.
So, yeah, and what we're trying to do is come up with a level capital amount for the foreseeable future. So, we took a couple of the larger projects and carved those out and potentially could attach those to another borrowing to get those, to accomplish those projects and avoid situations where we go from 7.1 to 6 to 4 to 3, and just kinda level it out at $4 million a year. So, that's where we came up with the 4 million.
If I could add about, you see where it says systematic, so I'm gonna tie this to, Gana Fleming's doing our study right now, they still have a lot of raw data. But we had said early on in the study, we're gonna base the study on the age of pipe and come up with replacement dollars, so we can have some tighter dollars. But we also said, we're not gonna spend any time on trying to evaluate, evaluate or study the terracotta pipe in North and South Wayne. We know it's, my good colleague here, it's done. So, that too, in the year, is not to jump around and put Band-Aids on different runs, is to go in a systematic fashion and start replacing that terracotta pipe, reducing INI, providing better service when we can, getting them out from under garages, rerouting them. But that's, so that's, like I say, that's systematic, that's not spots, that's not here and there, that's giving staff the chance to look at our sewer map, break it down into sewer sheds, and go through there. As time goes on to Commissioner Farkey's point, there's a lot of ways of repairing pipe and replacing pipe. So, we're not talking about that for the terracotta, but we do have transite that sometimes can be lined. There's a myriad ways of lining and bursting pipes. That's where the technology comes in, GIS mapping. We wanna start getting our files on GIS. It's a great tool, it helps for planning, it helps our guys in the fields every day. But, so we could have an offline meeting on the dozen ways to rehabilitate, replace, and repair pipe. For the terracotta pipe, we're not talking about that, we're talking about replacement, period. As you get into the other pipes, maybe a pipe is at its useful life, but when we televise it, we find out it's really not so bad, maybe it can be lined. But if you remember last year, when we talked about this, televising is the one way, again, forget the terracotta, to really determine the status of a pipe. Now, there's additional things that can be done, air testing, smoke testing, but, so that's what's part of this, as it goes on out in the future years, there's more of that. But the idea is to go through the system. DEP had a process where they wanted all the townships to go through their system every five years, that's 20% a year. It never passed, but to actually televise and clean your system every 10 years is attainable, and from that, you determine a lot of your capital projects. But that's where these number, Skunk Hollow, we're already in the middle of that, GIS mapping, your pump stations are in bad shape. Hermitage, that needs to be replaced, it's undersized, on big rains, you'll see these guys out there, they got pump trucks. So, you need to bring those stations into the 2000s, but that's where most of that came from. King of Prussia's a very important station to the township.
So, Bill, could you maybe go back to things about this is gonna mean for sewer rents?
So, I'll hide this, so maybe get it up on the one screen. We have forecasted sewer rent rates down here, and basically what this is, is just playing with the rent rate to get this net revenue number to be above zero, as close as possible. So, that's what we've done. I built out two specific scenarios. I built out one, as you can see here, with the additional staff, which I think even in an ideal world, if the board said yes right now and we got to work tomorrow, we wouldn't be in a position to hire 11 folks tomorrow, or even by the first of next year. But just for, just to see the impact of that kind of cost, it would be roughly, it'd be $15.75, so we'd be talking about 121% jump in the rate. Then, that after one-time correction, the adjustments thereafter are pretty normalized because, again, the programs, the correction's done, the program's up and running. So, obviously, that's a big number to swallow. The other one that we ran was, if we just status quo with capital, we're still looking at a sizable correction to get the fund to balance itself out. And I would, I would argue that $1 million per year in fund balance is cutting it pretty close, because like I, well, I mentioned offline a while ago, is we pay RHM 4.1, 4.2 million a year. The first quarter installment is due in February, so we gotta have, and we don't bill till April and May. So, we gotta have at least 1.2 million, 1.5 or 1.7 is better because we also have payroll. We gotta have that in the bank before we send the bills out. So, there's gotta be a carrying balance just on a cash flow basis to get us through the first couple of months of the year. So, a million is tight, but at these rates, this is what it would take to balance the revenue and expense activity. Now, water consumption's the other variable to the calculation that is a bit of an unknown. The way that this is forecasting it is kind of taking the trend of the last eight years of a gradually declining water usage. That can fluctuate year to year. There's, I would imagine over the next five years, there'll be years where it does tick up, and that could have a pretty significant impact on how much revenue's generated in a particular year. But those are the rates that. But those are the rates that, again, so anywhere from, this is, this is status quo with capital $2.50 more per 1,000 gallons to incorporate the more ideal department and ongoing maintenance of the program.
My recollection is if you sell the system as moratorium on future price raises by the new utility, probably Aqua in our case, for a period of, I want to say 10 years. And then there was, I might be confusing that with the tiered price increase period.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know all the details, but I don't think we can, I mean, we can try to negotiate.
No, there's no moratorium on price increases if you sell it. If they, if they buy the cash flow, they're going to run and recover it.
It's part of the, it's part of the.
PUC imposes a moratorium and I don't remember how long it is, but they're not permitted to just unilaterally raise prices after they buy it.
They change along, they are allowed to recover their costs.
There would be a negotiated term if the township were considered that. There would be a negotiated term where you could ask them to say the rate would freeze for a period of years and then beyond that, it's regulated by the PUC. So the PUC can only raise it by certain amounts. So they may only raise it 3% a year. However, the board can raise it 121% tomorrow, so.
Well, the worst possible.
Exactly.
The PUC allows them to raise it enough to recover their costs.
Over.
Over their period. So they can raise it and all they need to show is the PUC, oh, this is what it costs and they can raise it whatever they want. Now, what you're not showing there is if we borrow $20 million and put it into the, and put it in debt service. You put that number there to show it 120% increase because you're funding all of it with taxes immediately. Instead of borrowing the money and then increasing it by the amount of the debt service over 20 years.
No, we're.
Yes.
The concept that Bill is putting forward, that you're all putting forward, is that instead of just having one giant lump sum that we pay all at once, which would then go away and we could fund over time with debt service, is that every year we will be plowing money into the system. So if we take all the money out now and then we'll just need to get another one afterwards, you don't get the savings?
No, we won't. You're not making any sense, Jack. Look, what he doesn't have there, is financing proceeds. There's nothing shown on there. We could, you just showed us, first of all, on your graph, put 2 million for capital and a million towards emergencies. That's not really managing the system. That's just putting a number out there. We should go through and identify and know what the plan is. Now, I know that's harder and you said, well, instead of trying to identify, I know you don't.
Commissioner, that is the plan. Let me interrupt you.
But, 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 but let me just finish this.
There would be a plan.
Putting 2 million, putting a number, that's, that's one way of doing it, but that's not, that's just putting a plug. That's not managing the business of the sewer. However.
I beg to disagree.
All right, well, we disagree, but we, that's, that's one way of doing it. I understand it. However, you totaled up, that was $27 million or whatever it was, over a period of years. You borrow the $20 million, you increase the sewer rents by the debt service only. It's not close to 120% one time.
But that won't cover all the costs of the fund.
It will call, cover all the costs.
It will cover the cost of the debt.
The debt.
What we've demonstrated over the last four or five years is that the rate as it exists today is not enough to cover the operating costs of the program.
Especially when you added $1.4 million a year in new people that you want to, you want to hire.
Well, the issue is, is do we want to maintain the system?
Take it out, it's still upside down.
We can, we can take it out, but the issue is you have three people that are nowhere near maintaining the system that you have. And the discussion was, what is it going to take to maintain the system? Because the comparison is between, do you sell the system or that, which we don't even know. We don't even know what, if it makes sense for us to do that or does it make sense for us to keep it? Nobody knows it, sitting in this room. I will go, I'll tell you my opinion.
I, I.
But you don't know, nobody knows.
I've talked to two different public financial people in the business.
They don't know sewers.
They, they, these guys.
No, they don't.
These guys know the sewers, these are municipal, these are professionals you know we work with. Two different guys told me.
Who's that?
I'll tell you offline.
No, tell, I have mine.
I'll tell you offline because they, but I've talked to these guys. If we sell this system, the next person who buys it will do all this work and charge us more for it because they have to recover, they have a profit motive. Whatever, whatever we pay, it's going to be less. We could argue how much less, we can say it's only 5% less or 100% less. If we do the work, it's going to be less. Also, we are close to, we are, we are maintaining the system today. We are close to doing it because you're doing it. We're doing it today. We are maintaining it. We are, we are doing it.
The system is not, no, it's a limit. How do you know that? Here's a gentleman that works every day.
Because, because we're doing it. We, we're working with it.
We've done it with strings because exactly what you're saying, it's a political utility.
Okay, so let's, let's stop with the, let's stop with the chewing gum and shoestrings and let's put in the money and make the system right.
But you know 27 million is not enough.
So why don't we have a model here showing borrowing $20 million and spreading that out and let's get a new model.
Let me explain to you, so we would have a plan. Don't think that we wouldn't have a plan. And the plan would be to replace this subsystem, this sub drainage area. To help spread it out, we use 2 million a year. You can make that 5 million a year, you can make that 3 million a year.
Why only make it 1 million a year?
Takes longer. So either way, you're going to do this in perpetuity. You're going to go through miles and miles of vitrified clay pipe and then you're going to start going through miles of other pipe. But I just, so the other commissioners understand, we would not go into this haphazardly. There would be a very, very distinct plan that would go out many years for replacement. We would not do this as a dark, with a dark.
But Steve, what I'm talking about that plan, I'm talking about arbitrarily allocating $3 million a year. That's arbitrary.
This is arbitrary, is borrowing 20 million.
It's an arbitrary number, it is. Steve's going to have a, why don't we set out the expenditures to your extensive plan? Instead of just putting, because if you put 3 million, you're going to spend the 3 million every year.
We could, you could very easily spend that. We tried to make it somewhat of a leveled out area. This could be graduated, but we're going to have this for years.
The board actually has said, we don't want a study to tell us exactly what we have under the ground. The board does not want to spend.
What do you mean? We spent 88, we authorized 80,000 dollars for it.
It was a half a million dollars. That is not going to tell you the condition of your sources.
No.
We, we, everything you guys have asked for.
No, 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 that is not true.
It was very specific, you didn't want to do the televising. So for $92,000.
You recommended we didn't do the television.
We recommended we did do that.
Steve, do you want to?
Just real quickly, for $92,000, we're going to use the township resources and interviews with staff to develop an inventory, perform the consistent condition assessment based on the criteria noted, H, provide a budget level probable replacement cost, update the township GIS system with a sanitary sewer layer, present the findings to the board. One of the other requests you'll see when this report comes to you is we need to start spending money on televising. Not the, again, not the clay pipe, but the other pipe. As I said to you, age is one criteria, but you do not know the condition of the pipe until you televise it, until you clean it and televise it. And it was very clear last year, the board said, we don't want to spend, we don't want to go crazy. We want an idea where we are. You're going to get an idea, it is a tabletop exercise based on age of pipe. Like I said, we're not, we're not even evaluating the clay pipe. Clay pipe we're saying replace. But everything else, the transite pipe was as best as cement, PVC, polyvinyl chloride, ductile iron, they're all going to be graded on their age and their lifespan. We're going to find out that a lot of your pipe is beyond its useful life, but it still may work. To determine that, you need to televise it.
Steve, can I just ask a question here? My big concern with that whole, I guess we got into it a couple of months ago, with paying to have a study done, is that the consultants were also the salesmen. Is that, was that correct? That they would be the one that would be shopping it?
Shop it what? Sorry, I'm not quite sure.
That's finance. The guys who are talking about buying it were going to do with the appraisal.
That wasn't the people who were going to do the study.
That's not going to do the study. All right. I just want to, I want to make sure of it. So I guess then my, my big takeaway from all this, and I see where this is going, I think as Rich and you're saying, is that rates are going to go up regardless. So you can pay it in a sewer fee or we can pay it to a for-profit entity who's going to run a net present value on this. And whether we keep rates low for five years or two years or if there's a moratorium or not, we're still going to be subject, we'll lose control and we'll be subject to a PUC, which is another, you know, government agency and as well as Aqua, whose sole mission is to increase shareholder value. And how they do that is typically by raising rates.
Just like Pico, just like Verizon, just like Comcast.
Sure. And you see the problem, you see the problems that we have with Pico.
Are you proposing that?
We're talking about the sewer system.
Yeah, let me, let me.
Thing is saying about, you know, that it's not, we shouldn't.
But, okay. So my big thing is talking with, and I know you've just left the room here, is that if some of this infrastructure can last 100 years, I would be more inclined to possibly look at biting the bullet, interest rates are low, you know, paying it down for the next 30 years, figuring out a good payment plan where we don't necessarily have to, you know, jack up our rates to 15% or $13 or $10 on the sewer and expensing that over the next 30 or 40 years when you look at, at a bond. It's going to go up regardless. I would just rather see the township maintain control of this and not be subject to the PUC or for-profit.
Typically, the entities, the municipalities that are selling their sewer systems are stressed or unsophisticated, really need the money. We're not in that situation.
Upper Marion and Lower Marion, I don't believe they're stressed.
They haven't sold it.
But they're not stressed.
They haven't, they haven't done it. And I think they'll ruin the day when they do. And we've had, heard anecdotal evidence of the people that do, automatically it's going to be this bad and worse. But what I would ask Bob, I'm asking you to have the guys, let's put together some type of other analysis that shows a borrowing. If we need $20 million, just put it 20, and let's spread it out, increasing it over the years.
It's not 20 million all at once, right? It's going to take, how long would it take?
That was over his five or six years. It was 20 million over six years.
The number is going to be much, much greater. So what you're going to do is you're buying a system of 50-plus million. That's going to have to be done and then paid back at some point.
He showed us 27, 27 million over the six years.
This is covering all of this entire system, so.
Well, once we get everything replaced systematically, it'll be 100-year pipe.
All right, Bob, so what would it cost, what would it cost to get a consultant here to see how much it would cost to repair the whole system? If we keep it?
Before, it was a half a million dollars.
All right, then, you know what, then let's go.
We didn't even know.
Fine, you know what, then maybe we should look at it.
But the issue that I see here is you're going to have to maintain the system. You're going to have to maintain what you put in the ground. So the issue is you've got blockages, you've got all this. Three people can't handle it. You know, 2:00 in the morning plunging off different things. I mean, you're sitting, it doesn't work, it's a broken system. And the argument is based on you, what you think, that the PUC can raise this up. You don't know that. It's a guess. You don't know.
I did learn this last year. They can recover their costs.
You don't know.
But if we sell, I do know, because I looked at the legislation that allowed them to do it. But if we sell it to Aqua, they're going to have the same three guys and they're going to charge us for 10 guys. Plus get their money back and profit.
We can sit here and guess and assume all we want. So Bill, you worked very hard putting this all together. Thank you very much for that. Gentlemen, thank you, Steve. And thank you guys for being here. Steve, thank you. So is it an exercise in futility to look at what has been suggested? I mean, if you go back, where was the one that you had where it was, I mean, you have like a plan, you know, this is what we could spend or replace. This is what we're going to need to do in the immediate. Here are the things that need to absolutely be replaced.
Actually, what we presented with the 2019 budget might be a better worksheet for that because we had identified very specific projects, a lot of them. So I mean, we could go back to that. We haven't really talked, the other reason why we took this approach is, A, it's good enough for our roads, which is another major infrastructure item that we're responsible for improvement. It doesn't mean that we don't have a plan, it doesn't mean we're not managing the program. We are. But we identified a dollar amount per year to get the job done within a reasonable timeframe and within the useful life of the roads. We were doing the same approach with sewers. And quite honestly, the other reason why we did it that way is because this, we put a bunch of projects up there as we think those are the ones that need to get done and we're going to spend four hours arguing about, no, take that one off the list, put this one on the list. And then it becomes political as to which sewer lines are getting done.
Well, no, we didn't do that though.
That's because we took all the projects off. We put a dollar amount up there and then every year, the board decides what sewers are going to get replaced in the following year. So it, the control of the plan and it stays at the board level. We'd have engineering information on the age and the infrastructure and recommendations, but the board makes the ultimate decisions like you do with the roads on an annual basis.
We would show you a map with what we would recommend being replaced in 2020, 2021, 2022 and so on. So it would be far reaching.
I can, it's very easy to put together a borrowing plan.
Yeah, Bill.
And I will say that I must not be doing a good enough job demonstrating that $7.14 is not sufficient enough to cover the program as it exists today before we borrow a single penny. So whatever rate adjustment is going to be considered, it's going to have to cover the debt service and the shortfall that exists today. And that doesn't solve.
So if the suggestion is we borrow $20 million, which does not, will not take into account the maintenance, I mean, that would just be the one-offs, do the projects, one-off, replace the pipe, whatever. It wouldn't pay for the staff. I mean, show us what that would look like. And then the debt service, what is that going to look like?
We can stack it all.
Sometimes we need to see what that looks like.
Yeah, Bill, my, I guess my, my big takeaway is if we have two breaks and we're going to have breaks even if we are going to redo this, you know, I mean, it's going to take time.
We have breaks all the time.
I'm aware. You know, the debt service could be the cost of one or two breaks a year. I mean, I'm just trying to, if you amortize this out over 30 years.
Which would be.
Which is, which I think it's great because it's a, I mean, you see the cost savings because it's, a lot of this pipe can last 100 years. And you amortize this out, even 30 or 40 million in a bond over 30 years, your debt service shouldn't be all that much. And then after that 30 or 40 years, I don't want to say that it's paid for, it's free. You have the ongoing maintenance, you're going to have other issues.
Costs will go down.
But right now, we have the breaks that comes out of the general fund.
Sure, but you're going to have to bite, you either pay now or you pay later.
And once, once you go six or eight years and replace the majority of the bad and oldest lines, the cost will come down.
Yeah. To make sure it took you over 100 years to get into this situation, it's going to take you more than six or eight years to get out.
No, you guys are much better because you'll pull those pipes through there. Come on.
If you're going to give me 5 million, if you're going to give me 5 million a year, we'll get working.
We do it much better, we do it much better now. There's much better techniques. And it, the cost will go down and the, and our expenditures, the infiltration, expenditures will go down, efficiencies will go up, cost of maintenance will go down. And then we'll spread it out over 30 years, so.
And if we're using, yeah, we're using less water because of, because of the, you know, Bill's table. And you said that we didn't actively clean the pipes and we do clean the pipes. Could we, could we?
Cleaning the pipes doesn't correlate to less water.
Okay, it doesn't, no, it doesn't add to the, it doesn't add to the lifespan of the pipe if you clean them?
It's decreasing it generally.
On the bad pipe, on the good pipe.
On the good pipe.
On the good pipe, it allows you to see what's going on.
But to Commissioner Booker's point, it's going to take a lot of years to start seeing
that infiltration go, that INI go down. And it's going to, like I say, it took a very long time of doing absolutely zero to get here. It's going to take a long time, even with a very concerted, professional funded effort. There's going to be a lot of years of spending this money.
And you'll saddle future boards with this problem in the future by not having a factual study done.
I would be in favor after reviewing this with the new information of, and I think 500,000 dollars is a lot of money. I wish you could shop that rate to see how much our sewer needs, but I would be for looking at that and going through that exercise.
And if we follow, I know you guys have this, the 80/20 concept, right? 20% of our efforts are gonna give us 80% of our desired results. You get that 20% of this system, of this 100-year, you're gonna have a, you're gonna make a big dent in that INI.
We'll start cutting down INI every year, but you're not, it's not gonna be some, the graph's not gonna go flat on us.
Well, the graph of the water, you.
No, the graph of the INI, everybody.
No, that, RHM will jack the rates then because they're gonna try their cost over a lower number.
Yeah, it's the same thing as water consumption going down in Radnor, we're gonna have to adjust our rates upward to compensate. RHM's gonna do the same thing.
So, John, I'd like to hear from you on this quickly. I mean, what, what would you, what do you recommend?
I wanna see Bill do the analysis for some borrowing because we should be doing capital projects with borrowing. Because the idea is, the people that benefit from this are not just today, it's the entire time.
What time is it?
But I wanna see the numbers. I mean, the sewers are in terrible shape and look what happened with the rolls.
Rolls, really?
I mean, we were actually actively working on that, trying to, and, you know, went to hell before we were ready. And cost us three times as much. We've got, we've got to address these problems.
So, do you have any thoughts?
Is there, before, I mean, before we're spending money, is there an appetite for the board to raise the rate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're supposed to go, we're supposed to raise it 10% anyway.
Right. But I mean, in the future for borrowings, you're gonna have to raise the rate. One is to cover this, to balance, and then you're gonna have to raise the rate to increase, unless you wanna cut programs and services. So I think that really.
Well, they're mutually, I mean, they should be, in a financial sense.
Exactly, you're right.
So, I think sometimes we need to see it. I mean, we need to see what that, I think what that looks like. And I think I'm hearing consensus to look at what it would look like, what would borrowing plan look like, what would that look like?
Yep.
Because I don't think right now, as much as I know you guys would like, there's not the appetite to sell the system.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I hear, I hear two people for it.
But if we see, maybe there is.
The more we talk about this, the more my wheels are turning.
Well, maybe we need more.
Or to keep it.
So I, is there anyone that disagrees?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
With regard to the, the analysis of borrowing as well.
Borrowing analysis and see what that looks like sometimes, you know.
And also, you're looking at 1.4 million in increases in services. At 1.4 million, that's a big, big number for new.
But if we don't know how much it's gonna cost and why, then any number that Bill gives us is just, I don't wanna say pulling it out of a hat. We need to do that, that exercise that's gonna cost township a lot of money to do. But I think that at this point, maybe we should poll the board on whether we wanna keep or sell the system.
We, we need to do that 80,000, we need the results of that report because we did authorize a study.
And that's gonna get you, that's gonna get you in the ballpark at the valuation.
We gotta get that, we gotta get in the ballpark, we gotta look at that, understand what that gives us. And again, we know, Steve has identified the property, that there's lines that are 100 years old or whatever it is. So we need to identify them, get those projects, get the big, the high-impact projects, and look at this and put together a plan. Because whatever we do, we're gonna spend less than Aqua would. And Aqua's gonna have a profit motive and they're gonna charge our people, they're gonna get their money back plus. Absolutely the case.
Well, just, just real quick, if, if we finish those high-impact projects and then sell the system, we'll get that much more because the system's in that much better shape. So I don't, I don't see, I see it as a win-win either way.
You can always sell it.
Yeah, you can always sell it, but at least you're making the system.
But you're also putting a hook in that says we put so much in now, you've got a system in horrible shape. And also, I've asked the board for, I don't have an opinion yet because I don't have all the facts. It should be a study done, laid out to the community to say, look, here's your asset that's a bad asset. Do you wanna keep this or do you wanna sell this? And this way you can talk factually, not, oh, I talked to this person, they know this, or I, I get, I surmise this is true. We don't have the facts and I don't think the board does, but then almost 100 years ago, there were proposals on stormwater, how are we gonna fix that? And you sit here today, we haven't done a project yet. So the issue is, that's, that's fact.
But Bob, we know if we sell this to a for-profit entity, they're gonna get their money back.
We don't know that.
Gentlemen, we can debate this all night and be right back where we started.
It's business.
Gentlemen, we will debate this all night and be right back where we started. I think we clearly know where the stock stands on this issue. So, we do have still the study that we're waiting, that, Steve, do you know? Do we know when that will be?
The manager and I spoke to him, he's still got some, he's got an inventory, but he, he's literally needs to start flowing, going through our plan. So I, I, we're meeting with him tomorrow.
He's pretty far behind now, isn't he?
I, 'cause he had told us 90 days before we spoke, so we'll get him on track.
So we'll have that. You know, Bill will do an analysis for, I mean, maybe we're, you know, school learners or, you know, we just need more information. But I think that it, it's worthy exercises, so thank you for doing that. And then we will go from there.